Good evening and welcome to Richmond Public Schools School Board Meeting. I bring this meeting to order Monday, April 12th, 2021 at 6:02 PM. We're now ready for the clerk to give our electronic meeting statement and our roll call. Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. This meeting is being held as an electronic meeting pursuant to and in compliance with Richmond City Council's Orderance Number 2020-093, adopted April 9th, 2020, and extended by Orderance Number 2020-183, adopted August 20th, 2020, and by Orderance Number 2020-232, adopted December 14th, 2020, and the school board's resolution approved on April 20th, 2020. Simultaneous translation is being provided tonight in Spanish via Zoom, and the meeting notice contains information on how individuals meeting translation services could obtain the service. The meeting notice also stated that the meeting will be held virtual and will be livestreamed for the public on the school division's Facebook page, and the link was provided. The meeting notice indicated that the board would not receive public comments in person. However, public comments could be submitted to the board clerk, and in the email address for the comments was provided. The agenda of the meeting was posted on Board Docs. After the roll call, we will state how many board members are participating during the roll call. Mrs. Dorr.
Mrs. White. President.
Ms. Gibson.
Here.
Mr. Young.
Present.
Ms. Rizzi.
Here.
Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Present.
Mrs. Burke.
Present.
Mrs. Page.
Present.
And Mrs. Jones.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, you have eight participants, board members.
Thank you, and Mrs. Dorr is trying to get on now. I think she is. Okay, please let the record show that Ms. Dorr is here with us. So, welcome back, everyone, from your spring break. We hope that you had a chance to get a little rest, and we're back at it again, ready to embrace our students and keep the main thing the main thing, and that is the teaching and learning process. As a reminder, as we know, as we move through the meeting this evening, the chat box, we will continue to utilize that, and Mr. Young will give me the listing so that we can move swiftly through our meeting. First item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. May I have a motion for that?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Is there a second?
Pocket.
Moved by Mr. Young, seconded by Mrs. Page to accept the agenda as is. Are we ready to vote? Question? Madam Clerk.
Mrs. Dorr.
Yes.
Ms. White.
Yes.
Ms. Gibson.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mrs. Rizzi.
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Yes.
Mrs. Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Page.
Yes.
And Mrs. Jones.
Yes.
It passes unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and Madam Clerk is struggling with her voice tonight due to allergies, and I do understand. So whatever you need to do in terms of taking a break or whatever, just let us know. I know that is a challenge. The weather is so beautiful, but that pollen is challenging. All right, recognition tonight. We're moving on to point 201. Recognition of the student representative superintendent Camus.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. I am delighted to introduce to you all our student representative for this evening, Anaya Davis. Anaya is a senior at John Marshall High School and was recently named valedictorian for the class of 2021. Congratulations, Anaya.
Yes.
She currently serves a senior class president. She's on my Student Advisory Council. Anaya participates in FCC LA and the Upward Bound Program and is also a member of the National Society of High School Scholars and the National Honor Society. Anaya has been an RPS student throughout her entire school career, having attended both Swansboro Elementary School and Elkhart Thompson Middle School prior to attending high school. After graduation, Anaya will attend the Longwood University Cormier Honors College with a major in Biology. She plans to later attend dental school and become an orthodontist. Well, Anaya, I have two boys who are going to need your services very soon, so hurry up and get through college and dental school. I am proud to introduce to you all Anaya Davis.
Welcome, Anaya. We're proud to have you. Thank you and congratulations, Ms. Valedictorian. Would you like to give any remarks?
Yes. First of all, thank you. Good evening, Chairwoman Burke, Vice Chair Young, board members and superintendent Camus. Thank you for letting me be here tonight, serving as a student representative. I look forward to learning more about the board process, and I would like to take this opportunity to address the board about my concerns, me and my friends here about graduation. As senior class president at John Marshall High School, I'm always the representative for my classmates. I always collect the information and the concerns that have that we have to present to our sponsors. Unfortunately, our sponsors have said we can't do it, but this is a topic way too important to ignore. Tonight, I am not just representing my views, but the views of many students who care about this topic. Our senior class has already had such a challenging and difficult year. We missed out on so much, from the simple things of being in person with our teachers and friends to the more fun activities, like high school football games. And we've also missed out on the special moments like prom and senior trips. We didn't even get to step into our school buildings except to pick up computers and then leave. Early in the school year, we held our hope that we might be able to come back in the second semester, but unfortunately, COVID has continued to prevent us from returning in person. I know that for me and my peers, it feels like everything that we imagined this year would be did not happen. It doesn't really feel like we made it. Instead, it feels like, thank goodness, it's over. It doesn't feel like a celebration because we haven't had any of those special moments that we worked so hard for from preschool or throughout our 13 years or so. And our families have also been waiting so long for this moment. They want to celebrate us and all of our achievements. It is so important to give us something special to celebrate after this traumatic period in our history. I think it would be great for us to have a graduation ceremony since Governor Northern has announced that we can't have outside events with 5,000 attendees or inside events with up to 500 attendees. Our community knows how to protect themselves with social distancing and mask wearing, and I think it is really important to give our senior class at least one opportunity to be together to celebrate our achievements. My idea for graduation, given COVID restrictions and protecting the health and safety of our community, is to have ceremonies outside where we can socially distance and provide plenty of space between families. We can do this at our schools or another location that works for this purpose. I hope that RPS will consider allowing us to come together and celebrate. We have achieved so much even with all the challenges that we face. Thank you for your consideration and letting me represent my fellow students.
Thank you so much. Yes, let's applaud Ms. Davis. Thank you. Thank you so much for your remarks. We appreciate your being here and representing John Marshall High School. Superintendent Camus, was anything else?
Thank you so much, Anaya. We are so grateful to have you here tonight and looking forward to hearing your reflections after this evening. Thank you.
And we understand that you may need to leave in preparation for school tomorrow at some point. So just let us know when you're getting ready to, or I guess Mr. Stanley will let us know. But thank you again, Ms. Davis, and the best to you always. You make RPS proud. 02.02 proclamation, recognizing Administrative Professionals Week. Superintendent Camus.
Thank you, Chairwoman. I am delighted to read this resolution in honor of Administrative Professionals Week, which is April 18th through the 24th, 2021. Whereas Administrative Professionals Week is observed annually in workplaces nationwide to recognize the important contributions of administrative support staff. And whereas administrative professionals, including executive office associates, office associates, administrative office associates, and other administrative support staff are essential to the fabric of RPS. And whereas RPS administrative professionals play a critical role in managing the day-to-day office operations of every school and every central office department within RPS. And whereas RPS administrative professionals are often the first face many families see when they enter a school building or the first person they hear when contacting an office, and therefore are responsible for supporting a positive and loving culture for our entire school and departments. Whereas RPS administrative professionals serve with love every day, bringing a diverse skill set to their role, including advanced knowledge in communications, finance, computer software, project management, organization, customer service, and other vital office management responsibilities. And whereas RPS recognizes the importance and contributions of each administrative professional in providing a positive experience for all students, staff, and families to the overall success of the division. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the School Board of the City of Richmond recognizes April 18th through 24th, 2021 as National Administrative Professionals Week and encourages all schools and community members to join in this observance and share their appreciation for administrative professionals.
Thank you so much, and many thanks to all of our administrative professionals. Where would we be without you? Thank you for being the important part of the puzzle. Thank you, thank you, thank you. We can now move forward to 2.03 proclamation, recognizing assistant principals week.
Assistant Principals Appreciation Week, April 5th through 9th, 2021. Whereas the National Association of Elementary School Principals and the American Federation of School Administrators designated April 5th through 9th to honor assistant principals and acknowledge their key role in the achievements of schools and students nationwide. Whereas RPS assistant principals are instructional leaders helping to support rigorous and engaging teaching and learning throughout each school. And whereas RPS assistant principals are critical to the overall success and health of a school building, ensuring that schools run efficiently and effectively by creating systems and building infrastructure for schedules, student activities, and more. And whereas RPS assistant principals are essential members of a school's leadership team, collaborating closely with principals and support staff, providing administrative support and being ready to be called on to step into the role of principal on a moment's notice. And whereas RPS assistant principals are creative and solution-driven, finding innovative ways to increase attendance, student achievement, and family engagement through home visits and community events. And whereas National Assistant Principals Appreciation Week is an opportunity to recognize the leadership, versatility, and dedication of RPS assistant principals. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the School Board of the City of Richmond recognizes April 5th through 9th, 2021 as National Assistant Principals Week and encourages all schools and community members to join in this observance and share their appreciation for assistant principals.
Thank you so very much, and many, many, many thanks to our APs. Good teamwork makes the dream work. Thank you, thank you, thank you. All right, the next item is 2.04 proclamation, recognizing school library month librarians.
And last but not least, school library month, April 2021. Whereas the first school library month was established in 1985 by the American Association of School Librarians and has been celebrated nationally in April ever since. And whereas RPS school library programs ensure that students have access to a wide variety of educational materials and become effective users of ideas and information. And whereas RPS school librarians go above and beyond to develop a love of literacy and learning in our students through innovative programs such as online book clubs, book vending machines, and even an evening read aloud groups. And whereas the RPS library media services team meets students and families where they are by bringing the library to students and families in the form of the Lit Limo, a traveling library that provides books for students to keep as their own. And whereas RPS school librarians have been invaluable resource to students and families during the virtual school year, troubleshooting technology issues and providing access and direction for student use of eBooks and online resources. And whereas school library month is an opportunity to recognize the special significance that school library programs and school librarians play in the educational experiences of all RPS students. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the School Board of the City of Richmond joins Governor Northam in recognizing April 2021 a school library month in the Commonwealth of Virginia and encourages all schools and community members to join in this observance and share appreciation for all school librarians.
Thank you so very much. Congratulations, and please, everyone who's watching, show our appreciation to our office personnel, staff, our assistant principals, and our librarians. That's the hub of our school. Thank you so much. We're now ready to move to 3.01, public information. Colleagues, what's your preference? Usually it's two minutes, no more than two hours. Is there any other suggestion regarding public information? We have about 17 pages. Without any feedback, then we will proceed as listed. I believe Ms. Tedesco, is that correct? You're starting out? And who's keeping time? Kim, Ms. Collins?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you so very much. Please proceed.
All right. Sorry, let me just pull it back up here. Okay. Graham Sturm, good evening, Ms. Burke. My name is Graham Sturm, and I write to you today that you and the School Board joined the Armstrong History Department and Administration in congratulating Armstrong sophomore Akima Hargrove for coming in first place in the RPS History Fair. We are so proud of her accomplishment and recognition. Congratulations, Akima. Caitlin Waldron, I'm writing you today to ask a few questions. One, upon looking at the blueprints and driving through the parking lots of River City Middle School, there seem to be less than 100 spots for teachers and staff. When asking a question on a community forum, Linda Owens told me I could park in the bus loop after 4:30 PM. As I am a teacher, I am just wondering if there are plans for more parking spots to be added for the upcoming school year. Excuse me. Two, next year will we be able to adjust our SMART goals? It seems like all of our pre-written goals are directly related to attendance, which makes it difficult to achieve since students are counted as presence for signing in to the meet for only a moment or later coming back and answering the snapshot or bell ringer question. Three, are teachers getting updated technology soon? I am so thankful for the computer I have been using the school year, but it no longer updates or needs to be connected to an Ethernet cord in order to do so. Is technology for teachers something you're looking into? Just wondering. David Tuck, I like the fact that the district will be paying for lab supplies, but I'm nervous about how scripted it will be after seeing math and English deal with bought curriculums the last two years. Meredith Thompson, School Board members, please support the resolution to give RPS control over building their own schools. Take this control from the city who has repeatedly mismanaged and politicized the responsibility and give it to RPS. Building schools should not be held hostage to economic development projects that exploit people. It's manipulative and will not serve our most vulnerable communities. Please remind the superintendent that he is not in the position to support such plans either directly or tacitly. Maybe RPS facilities have been chronically understaffed and underfunded to keep RPS reliant on the city and to keep the city in control. Please ignore the gaslighting narrative that this resolution will delay building George With High School. Make no mistake, the delay in building George With High School is a result of mismanagement by the city in building the three new schools, which cost 30% over costs and over budget. Our children have been out of the buildings for over a calendar year, and this administration has finally, at long last, put forth an eight-page reopening plan tonight. Comparatively, DC Public Schools reopening plan was 120 pages long. Clearly, this administration is woefully unskilled and unprepared in facilities management. Take back control and invest in our facilities so that our children and RPS staff can go to schools that are safe, well-built, well-maintained, and well-managed. Thank you. Mark Lipshultz, I'm writing to express my overall support for the reopening plan, but my strong disagreement with the plan to install temperature scanners and require students to walk through them each day. Please read the science. Simply put, these do not work. Moreover, they will be a big waste of taxpayer dollars in a logistical bottleneck each morning. At this point, most of us have experienced the frustration of temperature scans that register absurdly low temps because we just came in from the cold or hot temps immediately after exiting a hot car. What will the protocols be for when a bunch of students exit an un-air-conditioned bus and half of them register 100.6? Will they be sent home immediately? I'm all for keeping our students and teachers safe, including wearing of masks in particular, but we must resist the urge to implement hygiene theater. Sincerely, Reverend Robert, well, no, I think that was Mark. Reverend Robin D. Mines, George With High School. Amanda Reisner, good evening. I am writing to request that we continue with the process to change school start times as stated in an earlier board meeting. We need to do what data says is developmentally appropriate. It would greatly benefit our students academically. Sarah Brown, dear speakers, I guess I should not be shocked anymore by anything that Richmond City does, but I am just learning that the city council controls an overseas building and development of schools. This seems rather preposterous, especially in light of the fact that monies in the last few years have been promised to schools and then flagrantly frittered on some other projects deemed important by city council. If the School Board does not adopt Kendra Gibson's resolution and the School Board implicitly or overtly agrees to take funds from proposed city casinos, then once again, they're at risk for having that funding withdrawn preciously. I agree with Ms. Gibson. Schools should be in charge of making decisions for schools. I hope that you will support her resolution and tell the city council that you don't want promises of nebulous casino money but concrete budget numbers that you have control over. Amy and Mary Sowers, dear board members, we are writing because we heard your meeting to discuss whether you should support the casino. We understand you feel the potential financial gain will outweigh the negatives from having a casino located in our area. We can appreciate wanting more funds to help improve our schools, but receiving any funds from the casino are wrong. Obviously, casinos make money from the loss of gamblers, and in most cases, these are individuals that can least afford the financial loss. People gamble in hopes to make it rich, but we know that there wouldn't be casinos around if they didn't make a massive profit from these individuals. Please do not accept funds from casino gambling. This sends the wrong message to our students that casinos are wonderful places, and the long-term impact to our kids and neighborhood will be extremely negative. Please oppose the Bally's proposal. Our neighborhood is not the proper place to support a casino. We sincerely hope you will stand up with us to say no for this horrible business, which would be located within our neighborhood. Thank you. Jen Morse, as a Richmond citizen, I am appalled that our city is stooping to the level of the casino industry to improve our city. The location of the casino is a non-factor, as I oppose all locations. I am also a former high school teacher, and I find it disgusting that our kids are being used as bargaining tools in a dark world saturated with corruption. I have yet to find reliable data that unequivocally supports the idea that casinos will improve our school district. I understand that school funding is likely the most complex issue facing school board members, but intertwining our school funding with the casino industry isn't creative. It's the easy way out, and it puts our kids in harm's way. Patricia Kinzer, dear school board members, I write to express my support for Kenya Gibson's draft resolution that hashtag #schoolsbuildschools. I also encourage school board members to create a resolution that reminds the city that a new large-scale casino is not necessary for building schools. Funding for schools should not be entangled with casino gambling. I hope you will join me in my opposition to the casino proposals under consideration by city council. In particular, I hope, excuse me, I oppose the Bally's proposal, which is located within my neighborhood where citizens have clearly stated that they do not want their children to be exposed to the negative impacts of a huge casino nearby. I do not want to see a casino placed in any neighborhood whose families do not want it there. Please join me in standing up for our families and for Richmond overall. Thank you for your time. Mary Ann Kinzer, dear school board members, I would like the record to show officially that I oppose the Bally's casino proposal, that I oppose entangling casino gambling with school funding, and that I support Kenya Gibson's resolution being presented today. While I oppose a casino anywhere in the city, I am particularly appalled at the Bally's site as well as their terrible plans. The citizens living in this community do not want a huge casino near our schools in our family-friendly neighborhoods. The School Board should take a stand against tying casino gambling with schools. Please accept Kenya Gibson's resolution and also please create an additional resolution against building a casino in the 4th district or any district in which the casino would be so close to schools and neighborhoods. Thank you. Jo Watson, leadership is not easy. It often requires saying no to the easier path. Bringing casino gambling into RVA is a step in the wrong direction for our future, for our children, and for generations who will be negatively impacted by the vice and addiction and crime that will come with it. You represent more than schools. We can do better than this. Choose wisely. J. Dexter Brown III, I'm a 35-year resident of the Oxford Stratford Hills community for the past 17 years at the address in the signature of this email, and I'm writing to oppose Bally's proposal for a casino in our neighborhood and entangling our school system with revenues from casino gambling and in support of Kenya Gibson's #schoolsbuildschools resolution. Based on many past experiences, if anyone believes that significant revenues from a casino operation or any money scheme the city dreams up will in fact end up in the coffers of our public schools, they are delusional. Fool me once, your fault. Fool me twice, my fault. Fool me three, four, or five times, appoint a guardian. Thank you for your consideration. Erin Carroll, to whom it may concern, please let the record show that as a resident of 5112 Evelyn Bird Road in Richmond, Virginia, I am voicing my opposition to the proposed Bally's Casino at the Forest Hill location. As a resident of Richmond, I do not want our public schools to be connected in any way to legalize gambling or to the Bally's Casino. I respectfully implore you in the strongest terms possible to reject this potential entanglement and proposal of partnership with Richmond City Public Schools. W. M. Blair, to whom it may concern, good morning. Please know that as a citizen of this fair city for a lifetime, that I am opposed to the building of a casino in the Richmond area. How well did the betting parlor on West Broad Street do? We have enough ways with the Lotto for our fellow Richmonders to toss away their money. Please vote no on casino. Thank you. Stephanie Gar Adams, I oppose entangling schools with casino gambling. I support Kenya Gibson's #schoolsbuildschools resolution. Thanks. Victoria A. Shivi, members of the Richmond City School Board, I am a 25-year-plus resident of Stratford Hills, 4th District, a licensed clinical psychologist, and an associate professor with a specialty in job and work-related concerns. I offer my highest unequivocal support for Kenya Gibson's draft resolution that hashtag #schoolsbuildschools and urge all school board members to create a resolution that funding for schools should not be associated with casino gambling, and in particular, to give a flat no to Bally's Corporation proposed resort casino in Richmond's 4th Foder District. Bally's Corporation intends to enter our community and will saturate all of Richmond, including our youth, with Bally's Omni-Channel, online and on TV as Bally's Sports Network, approach to gaming and gambling. As a licensed clinical psychologist and researcher, I'm very concerned about adult and especially adolescent problem gambling as a threat to the Richmond community. Current prevalence estimates for problem gambling far exceed the commonly cited 1%, citing Harrison in all 2019. Please do not allow our community to be Bally's test case. Bally's Corporation is not a good neighbor to Richmond's D4, and there is almost no community support for this development, vendor plus site. Stratford Hills held a protest against Bally's Corp. We care about Richmond's youth. I've read the Convergence Group's economic study and the Jaylarks report, neither of which supports District 4 location as quote "best." I have attended all the virtual proposals and both community report meetings on MSTMs. I made comments on ConvayO. I am also familiar with the evaluation criteria that to be used in assessing the three remaining proposals. The Richmond Times-Dispatch published my letter to the editor, pasted below in blue text, on April 10th, 2021. The Bally's Corporation Resort Casino Proposal is inconsistent with Council of- Claire Novak. Dear City of Richmond School Board Members, my name is Claire Novak and I live at three-three-one-six Blythewood Drive in Richmond, Virginia, two-three-two-two-five. I am in opposition to the ballet's proposed casino in Stratford Hills. This development does not conform with the city's newly adopted master plan and it will have devastating impacts on the community in regards to traffic, visual impacts, light pollution, negative environmental impacts on the James River ecosystem, historical resources, and negative social impacts on the community who are enticed to spend their money on gambling. I support the articulate article written by a member of your board, Kenya Gibson, that explains the negative impact that such a development will have on our schools and community. City leaders need to demand better development for Richmond. Ask for and it will come. This is garbage in equals garbage out. Don't trash our community and Richmond schools. Thank you. Beth Kayer. Dear Richmond City School Board, I am writing you today to express my formal opposition to the ballet's casino proposal. I could write paragraphs against the proposal, but today I will just bullet point the main reasons why this would be a negative impact on our city for years to come. Proximity to a dozen schools, wetlands, health, drainage, and overall ecosystem in the area. Prime addition and they prey on the poor, light pollution, presence of graves cemetery near and potentially on property. There are at least three other casinos being built in Virginia. Why do we think people will want to travel to Richmond? When there will be choices closer to home, home property values. We own a small business and ultimately a casino in the city will drive us to move our business elsewhere elsewhere. When on the ballet's call a couple of weeks ago, it was very clear that they did not have any insight on the area they had chosen for the casino. And I do not believe they ultimately care about the citizens and the city. They are money-driven only. I support Kenya Gibson's draft resolution that hashtag schools build schools. We need to find a way to fund our schools that does not include ballets or any casino in the city. We do not want our children exposed to the casino and the negative impact it will have on our community. Thank you for taking the time to read my email and I hope you will vote no to proceed with ballets or any casino in Richmond City. Stand up for our families and Richmond City. Best. Paula Smith. Dear School Board Member, in one of the virtual meetings with the ballet casino executives that I attended, the question was raised about what the advantages that bringing casino to our neighborhood with more than several schools in the surrounding area will do for our children. Their answer? They stated that the children could benefit from using the spa. Seriously? This is reprehensible. I hope that you will join me, my friends, neighbors, and associates of the Forest Hill, Westover Hills, and Stratford Hills neighborhoods in opposition to this proposal and prevent our children, our future, from being unnecessarily exposed to so many of the negative impacts that a casino in such close proximity to their everyday existence would create. Please support Kenya Gibson's draft resolution that funding for schools should not be entangled with casino gambling. I hope that you will join me in my opposition to the ballet's casino proposal in the Stratford Hills neighborhood. Thank you. Emily Wilson. Dear School Board Members, I would like to express my support for Kenya Gibson's draft resolution that hashtag schools build schools. I also encourage school board members to create a resolution that funding for schools should not be entangled with casinos. Regards. Beth Music. Dear School Board Member, I am writing you to express my support for Kenya Gibson's draft resolution that hashtag schools build schools. I hope that school board members will work to create a resolution that funding for schools should not be tied with casino gambling and that a new large-scale casino is not necessary and not wanted. I hope you will join me in my opposition to the casino proposals under consideration by city council. In particular, I oppose the ballet's proposal, which would be located within my neighborhood. This location is in the middle of many neighborhoods and schools and citizens have clearly stated that they do not want it and do not want their children to be exposed to the negative impacts of a huge casino nearby. I do not want to see a casino placed in any neighborhood whose families do not want it there. Please stand up for our families, our school, children, and for Richmond overall. Thank you for your time and consideration. Sincerely. Maria Tab. To the members of the school board. I thank you for the leadership you have accepted in your role. I know that leadership, especially in public service, is not easy. Nor is demonstrating leadership by not taking the easy way. While it may be tempting to see the proposed RVA casinos as a much-needed revenue source for our schools, I ask that you once again put our schools, our students, and our community ahead of quick money. Tying the potential revenue of a casino to funding schools is counter to the lessons of self-reliance, responsibility, and work ethic that we should foster in our students. Don't let those who would profit off a casino in RVA use our students as pawns in their sales pitch. I ask that you oppose entangling our schools with casino gambling. Josh Kayer. To whom it may concern, we write to you today to formally object to the ballet's casino located in Stratford Hills. This casino would destroy this peaceful suburb. It is located too close to many homes and schools. We all know that studies show casinos lead to increased crime, poverty, along with loss in property value. You must object to this. We do not need a casino or their bribe to try and buy us or convince us they are needed. We are a strong independent city that does not need this type of element in our city. It will destroy all of the progress we have made thus far. Stephen and Lisa Hurst. Dear School Board, we oppose the entangling schools with casino gambling. We support Kenya Gibson's schools build schools recommendation. Thank you. Lisa Cumby. Any enterprise with a business model of preying on human fallacy to make its money is just wrong. A municipality that builds an economic plan that banks on income generated in that way is selling out its citizenry. A casino is not a win for anybody. It is a desperate, wild-eyed grab for easy money. We will pay for it in spades down the road in every possible way. For the record, I am all for reasonable positive development. I am not a NIMBY and I am not even particularly afraid of traffic. I am opposed to the soul-sucking void that casinos bring to their areas. I do not want to live there. No casino in the Forest Hills Avenue area, no casino anywhere in Richmond neighborhoods. Thank you. Sheila Keating. As a registered Richmond voter, I support Kenya Gibson's schools build schools resolution. In addition, I oppose the building of a ballet's casino or any casino in Richmond. Please do not get any kind of gambling establishment involved in discussion about school funding. Please include this in the minutes of April twelfth, twenty twenty-one meeting. Thank you. Bob and Macaria Scott. Dear School Board Member. My wife and I write to express our support for Kenya Gibson's draft resolution that hashtag schools build schools. We encourage school board members to create a resolution that funding for schools should not be entangled with casino gambling and that a new large-scale casino is neither necessary or wanted. We hope you will join us in my opposition to the casino proposals currently under consideration by city council. In particular, we oppose the ballet's proposal, which would be located within our neighborhood where citizens have clearly stated that they do not want the negative impacts of a huge casino nearby. Richmond now is emerging as a city with varied cultural attractions, nationally-recognized restaurants, a vibrant art community, and outdoor activities that take advantage of our beautiful river and park system. This is the image that we need to nurture and support, not as a city of gaming. Casinos hurt local businesses, prey on addictions, increase traffic and crime, and in the case of the Stratford Hills site, the massive footprint of this project will have a long-lasting negative environmental impact, not only on our district, but all of Richmond. We do not want to see a casino placed in any neighborhood whose families do not want it there. Please join us in standing up for our families and for Richmond overall and oppose this project. Thank you for your time. Debbie Rowe. Good afternoon, RPS School Board and Administration. I am writing to ask you to support Kenya Gibson's draft proposal which would give construction of RPS schools to the school system, not the city. Hashtag schools build schools. Efforts by the city administration to tie school construction to exploitative economic development projects like gambling casinos is manipulative and hurts our communities. Hashtag schools build schools. In twenty eighteen, school construction mismanagement by the city led to fewer schools being built than planned. We cannot allow the continued politicizing of RPS by the city administration. Hashtag schools building schools will create better oversight and efficiency, prioritizing students and community needs first. Please join me in supporting this resolution once introduced. Amy Kazdorff Gonzalez. Please add my comments for the record at today's Richmond School Board meeting. I am a resident of the fourth district and have particular concerns about the ballet proposal for a casino to be located off of Forest Hill Avenue. The disruption to protected wildlife habitat, the disruption of sacred burial places of families located in Granite Hill, the traffic congestion, all caused me to oppose this specific proposal. In addition, I am opposed to locating a casino anywhere in the city of Richmond. The long-term negative impacts on the population, crime, gambling, addiction, et cetera, far outweigh any near-term benefits of external cash flowing in. And when I consider the state of Atlantic City, New Jersey, where casinos are dying and leaving hulking empty spaces on the beautiful boardwalk there, that's not what I want for our city. I'm also concerned about the conflation of school improvements and funding derived from city-based casinos. This is dangerous and a mistake. I support Kenya Gibson's hashtag schools build schools resolution. Please record my opposition to the ballet proposal and to any casino proposal in the city of Richmond. Thank you. Emily Kavanaugh. I'm glad to see you have recognized bipolar ionization was an inappropriate choice for RPS. I see the move towards HEPA filtration units. I see you know Time Magazine review of this. I could not possibly care less what Time Magazine thinks of air filtration in our schools. Is Vogue also a fan of these units? What does the CDC, World Health Organization, think in regards to the pandemic? Other health experts, Dr. Fauci. Jennifer Fleming McCarthy. Please note my opposition to any casino in Richmond, but most notably to ballet's proposal in the middle of residential neighborhoods and wooded wetland areas near Forest Hill and Chippenhague. This proposal will harm our community, which in turn will harm the families and children of Richmond Public Schools. I oppose these casinos because the payoff that ballet's is offering Richmond is not worth the cost to the people of Richmond in the long term. Richmond is a vibrant and growing city. We are known for our small businesses, proximity to a beautiful river, and wonderfully wooded city parks, which are home to thousands of bird and wildlife species. Ballet's will contribute nothing to this community. It will take business away from our local shops and restaurants by driving any spending done at the casino back toward the non-Virginia shareholders of ballet's. I support the Richmond Three Hundred Plan, which is an opposite to the excessively large eyesore of a casino property. Additionally, virtually every study connected on casinos outside of Las Vegas have shown they have a negligible positive impact on jobs, but a universally negative impact on the communities in which they sit. The impact on neighboring property values is unambiguously negative, according to the National Association of Realtors. Casinos contribute to the increase in income inequality by targeting lower-income and elderly individuals with fixed income. People who live close to a casino are twice as likely to become problem gamblers and an increase of crime associated with casinos, drunk driving, drugs, and prostitution has been shown in areas within ten miles of a newly-built casino. The casinos in Maryland also demonstrate that they are a bad deal for the city. The casino revenues are down and thus are the payments that were promised to the communities. However, the communities are left paying for the negative externalities of casinos by losing valuable property taxes, seeing an increase in bankruptcies from homeowners and businesses, and more policing that is necessary to combat increased crime. Please oppose any casino in Richmond. It is a bad deal for our city, our families, and our communities. Fabian Wyatt. I support the ballet's proposal. If it is okay to build a brewery right next to a school, then I do not feel there would be a problem with a casino more than half a mile from the nearest school. Jeannie Baucher. First, thank you to the administration for listening to the facts and reconsidering its stance on bipolar administration. Second, please support the proposed resolution for schools to build schools in the city of Richmond so that the codified supervisory power of a democratically-elected school warden of City Council Resolution Number extends to include oversight of the bids, designs, and construction processes for new schools. This will enable the construction of schools to reflect the needs and wishes of the community rather than the whims and overspending of political maneuvering. Third, I hope the bus patrol contract renewal not only turns over a flat forty percent fee to RPS but is also modeled after the contract renegotiated by Montgomery County Public Schools. Lastly, please listen to teachers when they say that over-testing severely diminishes their instructional time and consider how many more hours of construction the twenty-one-twenty-two school year could have if a premium was placed on interactive hours with students rather than a wide variety of assessments. Carolyn Paulette. Please say no to a gambling facility being mixed up with schools and their support. Allow RPS to control school construction. Stop politics controlling schools and school construction and eliminate any casino projects since they prey on our most vulnerable communities that need encouragement and support. Thank you. Sharon Jones. RPS, as a resident of the city and specifically an alumni of George With High School, I am concerned that you are focusing on policy changes rather than focusing on our children getting what they need to recover from the setbacks of COVID-nineteen. It appears that this political agenda is at the detriment of our children. Please stop playing politics with our children. Concerned resident. Cynthia Dulick. As a taxpaying resident of the city, I want to express my dissent on the topic of the casino project and its quote tie-in to public school funds. Having a casino located within a stone's throw to many schools is concern enough, let alone kidding ourselves that said casino will be the answer to our school rebuilding efforts. The two should not be intertwined. If anyone has taken a close look at the communities immediately surrounding a casino, they are not thriving. We currently link the lottery to school funding and that certainly has not solved our problems. Let's not link another vice to the future of our children and their education. We can do better and find a better solution. John Wirt. Dear Richmond School Board, please join school board member Stephanie Rizzi in opposing a casino in Richmond. Time and time again, in cities and communities throughout the United States, promises that casino revenue will support education have proven to be a bait-and-switch scheme. Gambling companies profit off the backs of the poor. They exploit those who can least afford to lose. Casino-goers are locals who don't drive long distances for a big night out on the town. They don't stay overnight. They don't patronize local music venues or cultural events. They don't dine in an area restaurants. Money spent in the casino stays in the casino. Most of the casino floor is occupied by video gambling machines designed to hook and drain so-called gamers. Because the house usually wins, the destructive impacts gambling brings to communities include foreclosures and domestic violence. Ballet's furthermore intends to be a multi-platform gambling operation, imposing a sixty-acre community-disrupting physical gambling complex on the area, plus a TV's presence for sports betting and an addictive digital gambling operation through mobile apps. As for employment, casinos hire overwhelmingly for low-wage dead-end service jobs. Fifteen dollars an hour is not a good wage. I am one of many Richmond property owners and taxpayers who object to a casino's presence anywhere in the city. Casinos will erode our property values and quality of life. Ballet's proposed casino specifically is sorely out of character amidst the surrounding homes, schools, churches, and businesses. And it will inject burdensome traffic and air pollution and destroy green space, wetlands, and wildlife near the scenic James River. Please reject the imposition of any casino anywhere in the city of Richmond. Sincerely. I'm not going to read the next one since it is anonymous and public comment should be public unless, Nicole, I should read this.
Sorry, um. I, my understanding is that you all read all of them unless they are anonymous. I would leave that up to Ms. Burke, however.
Well, this person's name is Anon and their last name is Namiss. So I'm guessing that's anonymous. Ms. Burke, would you like me to read this comment or refrain from doing so?
Go right ahead and read it.
Okay. Anonymous. Dear School Board, I am writing this to oppose the RPS school board having control over building the schools. Not that it is really on the table anyway. Politicians are going to be polit- politic. It's their nature. However, the idea of the school board being able to do any better than the city is laughable. Some of this new school board team is clearly in an alliance and I have no idea towards what because they don't all seem to know their districts or necessarily be interested in them. They just spout national data and problems that we know exist with no solutions. We have school board members who can't handle their email accounts or respond We have School Board members who can't handle their email accounts or respond to constituents and can't figure out the menu on Zoom or how to turn on their cameras. To think they can handle the construction of a building is comical and absurd, naive at best. There is only one School Board member, to my knowledge, that has experience in architecture and marketing, and that's the third. Can we get off all of the quote "extra projects" and drama and get back to the grassroots of knowing our communities, responding to constituents, and resolving some of the issues we already have? Let's start at getting the School Board to a quote "acceptable professional place" and then build from there. Thanks. Rebecca D'Angelo. Hello, I hope you are all doing well. I write to express my support for Kenya Gibson's draft resolution that hashtag #SchoolsBuildSchools. I also encourage School Board members to create a resolution that funding for schools should not be entangled with casino gambling and that a new large-scale casino is neither necessary or wanted. In fact, I think it is straight-up nuts that Richmond is considering this. Richmond is almost unrecognizable as the city I have loved for 30 years. I hope you will join me in my opposition to the casino proposal under consideration by City Council. In particular, I oppose the Bali's proposal, which would be located within my neighborhood where citizens have clearly stated they do not want their children to be exposed to the negative impacts of a huge casino nearby. I do not want to see a casino placed in any neighborhood whose families do not want it there. Please join me in standing up for our families and for Richmond overall. Thank you for your time. Marcita Wade. To whom it may concern, please do not delay the construction of the new high school. Thank you. Sharon Mines. Please adhere to the present timeline for the construction of the new George With High School facility. Let's keep our kids' best interest first. And that concludes the public comment.
Thank you very much, Ms. Adasco and Ms. Collins, and thank you to everyone that sent in correspondence. Let's move forward to number four, Dreams for RPS Update. 4.01, receive an update of Dreams for RPS Goal 3 map data. That's Dr. Epp, correct?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair Young, School Board Members, and Superintendent Camrus. I'm presenting tonight an update on progress towards Goal 3, which is specific to academic proficiency in reading, math, writing, science, and social studies. For our overall goal, we measure this in different ways. Tonight's presentation is specific to progress in grades three through eight. One of the ways we assess progress towards that goal is our MAP test. The MAP is a nationally-normed assessment that we give three times a year in both math and reading for grades three through eight, and it is intended to measure both growth as well as proficiency against a national norm. Our data overall, as we looked at our data, we administered the MAP at the beginning of the year, middle of the year, and end of the year. So this data is specific to the middle of the year. And we look at three different measures. First is the percent of students meeting expected growth. That is basically based on where a student begins and the national norm. There's a growth goal that is set for that student's profile, and this tells us whether they are on track to meet their growth goal, which is not the same as grade-level proficiency. What you can see here overall and for all subgroups is the first bar is winter 1920. The second bar is fall 2021, and the third bar is winter 2021. So you can see quite a dip from the winter to fall. Just as a reminder, we did not give the spring assessment due to COVID closure in 2020. So we saw a dip there, but then we saw due to learning loss. However, we do see growth from this fall to winter, although it's not significant enough to be at the rate of year-over-year growth due to our learning loss. And you can see that pattern play out across each of our elementary schools, our middle schools. And so I won't go into detail in each of those schools, but you can see the breakdown there. The second measure we look at with MAP is the percent of students who are at or above grade level according to the national norm. And so this is sort of tends to be slightly higher than proficiency on the SOL. Again, you can see a sort of slightly more concerning pattern in that we just have a downward trend since last winter in terms of proficiency overall and quite a significant gap in performance between white students and all other subgroups. Again, this pattern plays out across each of our schools. And then the third measure is similar to what I just went over, and MAP provides us what's called a projected proficiency on the SOL. First, this is not an official kind of measure. It's something that the company that administers the test puts a lot of caveats around, but it is something that school leaders like to use. And I will say that historically, this rate has been under-projected, meaning our students tend to do better on SOL than predicted here. That said, you can still see some lower predicted rates of proficiency. And again, you see a gap in readiness among white students and all other students. And again, the same trend across our schools. You can look at that detail. I'm sure you've looked at that before. For mathematics, similar trends with a few exceptions. So first, we actually saw some much greater growth from fall to winter this year for our math in terms of percent of students meeting expected growth. So you can see we saw some pretty, pretty big gains, close to getting us close to year-over-year performance. Again, we want to be higher, but, but much more growth here in math than in reading. Similar trends across our schools. We use the same measure for math in terms of the percent of students at or above the grade level in terms of the national norm. Unfortunately, we see, we do see a similar pattern here as we do in reading with students, the percent of students here going down, and again, a pretty large gap in academic proficiency so far. Same pattern here with all of our schools. And then lastly, in terms of projected proficiency, again, you see higher numbers, less regression, but, but still a regression from winter a year ago to winter now. In terms of what this means, I think first and foremost, though our students have, have made progress since the fall, from fall to winter, the learning loss that has occurred from winter to winter to winter, so over the course of a year, and the impact, I think, of virtual instruction has been significant, and this has been true across our subgroups. When looking at reading in some, in terms of some specifics, if you're wondering what some of the drivers are, as we dug into some of the specific skills, we saw students doing well in what I would call isolated information, roots, affixes, synonyms, and antonyms, and using context clues and identifying authors' use of figurative language. However, students struggled with identifying supporting details, summarizing supporting details, and drawing conclusions. These are skills that tend to be, I would say, higher level in terms of analysis of text, which is what we're working on and focusing on with our students in our new curricula. And then with math, again, a similar trend in terms of strengths, number and number sense computation estimation. Students have done, those are strengths, but are struggling in measurement, geometry, patterns, function, and algebra across the board. One note, I think a small silver lining here, which gives me, I think we can point to and look in terms of some levers for changing, for changing these outcomes. Students who participated in reading intervention, tier-three reading or math intervention or summer school this year did not regress to the extent that their peers did. So they still went down, but not as much. And in some cases, they grew. For example, if you look at math, students receiving tier-three intervention, a year ago, 30% of them were were a grade-level norm proficiency. Whereas in winter this year, 30% of all, I'm sorry, they went up nine points, 8.7 points, 39% year-over-year. So you can see they made eight points growth, whereas all other students went down by eight points. So we are seeing the impact. Again, we'd like to see greater impact, but we are seeing some, some differential impact for students receiving interventions and summer school attendance. And thank you. I'm happy to take any questions.
If there are no questions, I can...
Thank you, Dr. Epp. For some reason, I was canceled out, so I wasn't ignoring you. Mr. Young, do we have any, any questions in the chat box?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Gibson, then Dr. Harris Mohammed, then Ms. Page.
Thank you. In that order, please. Ms. Gibson?
Actually, Ms. White was ahead of me.
All right. Ms. White?
Thank you, Ms. Gibson, but that's okay. Dr. Epp, I have a question. Looking at the math data graphics, is this... I heard you said that students were having a little difficulty in geometry and algebra. So when do they... Are all students pretty much on that new curriculum, Eureka? When do they get introduced to algebra and geometry where they actually get that chance?
Yes, ma'am. So there are components of all the sort of mathematical functions as, as low as pre-K. So there are aspects of elementary curricula that introduce algebraic concepts or concepts that are building blocks to geometry. But in terms of, so there are building blocks along the way, which our students appear to be struggling with a little bit based on the MAP data alone. They formally have algebra in middle school or high school and geometry traditionally in ninth or 10th grade.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. White. Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was wondering if, Dr. Epp, if you could provide some background in terms of, I mean, obviously, this is the first year that we're administering these tests virtually. And, you know, I'm curious if there has been insights gathered from, from teachers on, on how that went. You know, I would presume that there'd be a certain number of students who are, you know, not going to take the test with fidelity because they are home and supervision is different. And so I would just like to hear a bit more about just kind of putting it into context with the circumstances that we're in this year.
Sure. Thank you. And it's a really important caveat. This test was administered virtually in both the fall and the winter, whereas it was administered in person in last year. And there certainly, it certainly can account for, you know, a number of things. While we've put in place various parameters to make sure students are invested in doing their best and creating the conditions, whether it's MAP or any kind of other assessment, there certainly is a limitation with virtual administration. And so that certainly can account for something. Unfortunately, we just don't know what that X factor is. And talking with teachers, we certainly got feedback from the fall and did some, made some additional training tweaks and suggestions and tips in the winter. We also know that we had, you know, some students maybe not fully, some students not taking the test, or some students not wanting to complete the test. But the data here is reflective of the majority of our students who at least did attempt and did complete the test. So, great point. We just don't know how to quantify the impact of that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. Mrs. Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, Dr. Epp. Thank you for the data. I have two questions. One, how will this data be used to determine how a robust summer school program will be developed? And then how that, there's a second part to that first-part question. How would that summer school data be used to determine growth for our students? And the second question, are we preparing to engage our students to assess with remote assessments?
Thank you, Dr. Harris Mohammed. On the, on the first question, we'll use this data, we've used this data. We're using this winter data to identify, and I'll get, I'll speak to this later during our summer school presentation. It is one of the indicators for students that we are recruiting for summer school. So that's one way is to use it to identify students who will most benefit from summer school. We'll also, in terms of the data analysis, that the, some of the specific skills or content knowledge that I alluded to in terms of trends, those will certainly be shared with our summer school teachers when we do summer school training. We'll sort of aggregate all the data we have in terms of skills that will need reinforcement and the like, not just from this assessment, but from our other assessments to inform areas of focus. And then we'll also, in terms of impact, just as we looked historically at students who attended summer school last year, we will be, we will track and be able to report out on was there a difference in growth for students who attended summer school versus students who didn't? So we'll be able to report that data out. That's something we've begun doing over the last two years, so we can see the impact of summer school. Was there, was there another question?
The second question was, are we preparing to engage students to assess with remote assessments?
Yes. Well, I think there's something, I think there's more we can always do. We, we definitely, the MAP, the MAP, the MAP creators have some sort of practice things that we have teachers do with students. We, you know, we give teachers tips, we do teacher training before the MAP. We'll certainly, if students, if any students sign up for the remote SOL, we'll certainly do the same there. So we definitely go through some of that. All of our students, except for our third graders, have experience taking assessments online. So I think in particular, it's a significant learning curve for our third graders, but there's also just a difference in the learning environment when it's virtual and not in the classroom. But most assessments, even during a traditional school year these days, many of them are given online, as you know, whether it be the SOL or MAP.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Harris Mohammed, and Ms. Page. I'm sorry. Ms. Page?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have more of a comment, but also support a colleague, Dr. Sean, Dr. Harris Mohammed, with her question regarding summer school information. Thank you for this information. I'm not surprised with the pandemic. This is something, we're not the only ones that are experiencing this. But this data shows that we have a lot of work to do. And, but it also shows then equities and the achievement gap is much wider. Our focus needs to be on student achievement. And all this politics that we are discussing, our focus needs to be on student achievement because, but this information is showing us it's time for us to roll up our sleeves and stay focused on student achievement, stay focused on the main thing. Keeping the main thing the main thing. And I'm looking forward to the robust summer school program. the robust summer school program. Because what we are seeing, and I know we all, this is, this has been a tough time for all of us, our children, our teachers. But we all need to be in summer school, including us. But again, I'm looking forward to this program, but I'm just really, I'm at a loss. I'm at a loss for words, because like I said, it really shows the pandemic has really peeled and revealed so much, so much. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Page, for your comment. Mr. Young, who do we have next?
Ms. Rizzi, then yours truly.
All right, Ms. Rizzi, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Dr. Epp, for your presentation. You know, as my colleague Ms. Page just spoke about, I am concerned about the racial disparities we see here. You have a question about, you know, if our kids are all getting the same education, if they're having the same experience, then has there been any kind of drilling down into what might be responsible for this gap as a black parent? I am concerned about, you know, what, did you go down into like economic status? You know, are these families typically less resourced? What kind of supports are we giving our community to try to mitigate some of this? It cannot be our teachers, it cannot be, you know, as you argue, it's not the curriculum. So what is it we're, that we're attributing this to? And also, my question is, is this gap, hasn't been in existence to the degree that we see it here in previous years? Because this is definitely not the first year doing MAPS, MAP testing.
Well, I'll start with like the last question. I mean, I think the unfortunate, unfortunately, we're, we've been in a situation where we can't really afford to go down much more. So this trend of underachievement and gaps, based on all subgroups, has been a pattern, I think, in Richmond. And I think it's one of the many reasons we believe we've got to do things differently. So I think unfortunately, this, the pandemic, and this data shows that we've lost really important time and have moved in in the wrong direction, at least as represented here. So, but but this is not new in twenty-one, twenty, twenty-twenty-one. If you look at the baseline number, you'll see, you know, fifty percent of students, only fifty percent of students were meeting their growth goal already. So that, and then, you know, I I think in terms of the broader piece, to move the needle on achievement, it takes, I think, multiple things, moving all at the same time, be that curriculum, be that teacher development, be that effective school climate and culture. It, I think it takes, you know, effective student supports. So I think it takes, it takes, you know, all of those things working in concert. And so I think we're on the path to put those things in place. But I think it takes, it takes getting all of those things moving in motion at the same time for us to see the benefits.
Yeah, because I see that there was regression even with our white population. My question is proportionately, are the numbers similar to what we've seen in previous years anyway? Given the regression, you know, that all students experienced?
Yes, in terms of the gaps, yes. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Rizzi. Mr. Young?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'll try not to belabor the very articulate points made by all my colleagues. But at the risk of perhaps doing it, I do want to, like Dr. Harris Mohammed, like Ms. Page, connect a couple of dots. And I I don't think anybody should be surprised, as awful as it is to say that, by this data. Because we knew, we knew that despite Herculean efforts of our faculty and staff and the pandemic, what it was and what it still is, we were going to experience significant learning loss, not to mention more significant loss relevant to socio-emotional support. But we knew that we were going to experience loss and candidly, perhaps I'll, I'll leave, I'll leave those remarks at that. But at the risk of litigating or relitigating the past, no, we cannot continue to do the same, same old, same old. This just, this data just isn't sustainable. It's just not sustainable. Again, to connect a couple of dots, remind us all, not that I'm, not that anybody in this call needs me to do it, but of our high school students, only one in five are assessed as either ready for college or career. Only one in five are students ready for either college or, college or career. And that was before the pandemic. It's just not sustainable. I'm terribly concerned as it relates to the regression that Ms. Rizzi just spoke to. I'm terribly concerned that, as Ms. Rizzi just pointed out, that the inequities, that gap only increased. Again, we, we all, we all knew that that would, that would be a product of exclusively virtual and remaining exclusively virtual. I'm terribly concerned that, I'm terribly concerned that we arguably are limiting our, our additional instruction to the summer. Look forward to what we'll, what we'll be able to achieve this summer. But absent this, absent additional instruction, I'm concerned that we'll continue to experience only one of our, one in five of our high school students being ready for college or career. So my plea to my colleagues is that we not, that we not simply adopt the summer, summer schedule proposal, but that we recognize that indeed we need to do, to Dr. Epp's point, a lot, a lot more and a lot very differently. Madam Chair, perhaps some more choice words on just how tragic this data is. But but for now, I'll believe for the point. Thank you for listening. And I believe Dr. Harris Mohammed is up next.
And I see, I think I also saw Ms. White. Which one is, is that correct? Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes, ma'am.
And then Ms. White. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The data does not look good. We can all see that. But I see an opportunity for this governance team to apply our policy to ensure that effective and efficient support and instruction is provided within all of our schools through the leadership of the superintendent and his team. So yes, the data is bad. It is no, no doubt about that. But I want us to look at it as an opportunity for this governance team to raise the data, to demonstrate growth for our students. I don't want, and I know, I don't think any of us feel this way, that our teachers and our administrative teams in our buildings are not working the hardest, because I believe they are. There are some areas where we need to grow in every school probably. But I just see this as in, I am really cheering inside, because I see this as an opportunity for us to use this presentation, this data that was presented to us by Dr. Epp, to come together as a governance team and say, what is it that we need to do? As a governance team to support the instructional practices in the division, so we can move the data for our children. Lastly, we have to begin having some honest conversations with our parents. What Mr. Young just shared with us is is very accurate. And it's only going to continue if we do not bridge, and I think Dr. Harris' team has been doing this and can continue to do this, where we can continue to go into the community and build those relationships where they have not been built or they need to be rebuilt, because everything drives building relationships in our schools with our students. So I'm excited. I know the data doesn't look good, but I am, I am a optimistic, because I am a thirty-year educator. I can see that with this data, we have nowhere to go but up. And so I'm excited about the work that we're committed to do together, and I hope that all of you are as well.
Thank you so very much, Dr. Harris Mohammed. Thank you so very much. Ms. White?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Epps, I just had a question, because I know I had to ask you about the algebra. But I'm not surprised about the data either, because last year's summer school, you had the same similar, almost data. As a board, I hope that we, our school that we do now for summer school, we do something completely different. And I hope that it's not rigorous. Our children today needs basics, basic. This rigorous, you can't expect them to try to do algebra when they don't know the basics. I've sit here and watched year after year after year. Our children don't know the basics. So how do we expect them to perform well on tests when they haven't received the basics? You can't do rigorous until you learn basics. So I hope we have defined the problem, but I want a resolution. I'm tired of hearing everybody saying, oh, we're this, we're this, and I even heard somebody go on with political. I'm not interested in political. I'm interested in the children's achievement. It is time for us to find a way to get our children to the basic. And yes, it does fall on the parents. But we have to make sure that our children know the basics before they know the rigorous. You know, our children want to go to the specialty schools. But, and I'm, 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 I sit on the board at Walker, Maggie Walker. And then I see that some of the children haven't even taken Algebra I. Algebra I, or at least Algebra. That's why I asked you that question. But they don't know the basics to get there. Yes, the Eureka does, shows that, you know, it, it gives them that little brief part of geometry. I say with my own child, but he's, he's, he does well in math. But the children that are not doing well on virtue, you cannot give them a rigorous curriculum when they do not know basic. So I want to, this summer, I need to, we already defined that problem. But now we need a resolution, and we need something completely different, completely different. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White. Thank you so much. Mr. Young, is anyone else?
No, Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you all so much. We will move forward to four point zero two, receive Dreams for RPS Data Dashboard Update. Superintendent Cameron, is that you?
Dr. Epp's gonna present.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Epp. I'm sorry, I'm looking right at it.
That's okay. Okay, you guys are gonna see me a lot this evening. So, well, you know, in in the spirit of following up on that conversation, attending to our data is extremely important and shining a light on where we are in terms of progress against our goals as a division, as well as, you know, annually, but also throughout the year. So in this spirit of continuing to share with the board very clearly where we are against our goals, we've contracted with Schoolzilla, which is a data dashboard to track our ten Dreams for RPS goals, along with a subset of what we call KPIs, and those are key performance indicators. I'm gonna show you a demo in just a minute, but I want to just make a short distinction. Our goals are the annual performance measures that this board has set for our Dreams for RPS. The KPIs are indicators against how we are progressing towards that goal. So for example, I just showed you, you know, for academics, our goal is proficiency in academics, whereas the MAP is a KPI, an indicator towards progress. So the MAP itself is not the goal, proficiency ultimately is. So give you an example of what this looks like, I also want to just name, this is beta version. One of the most nerve-wracking things when you make, you know, when you put so much data out publicly, there can be, you know, slight discrepancies. And that is the nature of trying to aggregate and pulling data from lots of different sources and trying to put it into one place to view it. Okay, so this is a beta version, and it will be, we will be iterating on this over the next several months. But what you'll see is for every goal, you'll have, so for example, goal two is increase the graduation rate and post-secondary outcomes for students. There are three specific measures for that goal. One is the on-time graduation rate, one is the dropout rate, and one is the post-secondary enrollment rate. Those are our end-of-year goals. So these goals show the annual outcome. So here you look at, we have the most current data we have available, okay, from nineteen twenty for for these goals. Below, you'll see the KPIs. So we monitor the active dropout rate and the projected graduation rate. These are more dynamic. So these will be updated each quarter. So each quarter, each year, you'd see the actual goal. But each quarter, or depending on the the KPI itself, you'll see how we're progressing towards that goal. You can also, you know, drill down by school, by student, by demographic. So ultimately, there's a lot of features here for the board to access. We'll certainly continue to present data, as I've just done, in terms of specific indicators and goals. But you'll have access to this dashboard, so that you can see, you know, at a glance, how we are trending against any of the ten goals we've set. So I just wanted to share a preview and happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Do we have any one listed in the chat room? Thank you, Dr. Epp, for both of your presentations.
Not, not yet. So Madam Chair, if it be your privilege, I just have a brief comment while we're waiting for a call.
Go right ahead.
Thank you, Madam, and thank you, Dr. Epp. I, I would just, and I know it's our intent, but just wanted to, to say it publicly, make this very accessible via our website, the district and school level, I'm referring to data, along with all of our, all of our teachers, obviously, the, the student-specific data would not be. But but for the, the district level and the, the school data would be most helpful if we were able to make, make that available via the RPS website, so that all of our stakeholders could review in an easy, easily accessible way. And then, of course, all of our, all of our, all of our teachers and staff at our respective schools. Madam Chair, that's it. I see Ms. Page has a comment.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Ms. Page?
Okay, sorry about that. Yeah, I just wanted to concur with my colleague, Mr. Young. Exactly, this dashboard, because we've had to start from scratch, because we didn't have a data warehouse. But we want this to be accessible to everyone, and yes, have it on our website. So I'm looking forward to this going live, and I just can't wait. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Ms. Young, we have anyone else?
Ms. Rizzi?
Ms. Rizzi, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Was this a contract that we approved in our budget? I'm just curious, the Schoolzilla?
Yes, ma'am, this is in our budget.
Okay, and I, I just kind of want some clarification for like, first of all, this, I'm guessing, is going to be updated in real time as much as possible?
The, the KPIs will be updated as is relevant and possible. So it may be quarterly, it may be twice a year, depending on the specific measure. The goals are updated annually as the data comes in and is verified.
Okay, and then questions on how you see this practically used to support moving our system toward these goals in a practical way?
Sure. So, well, first, I just think as a, both governance body and a leadership team, including our school leaders, having a visual of where we are against our most, our ten most important goals as a division, and where we are in terms of our leading indicators, I think that I think that just keeps things very front and center and makes it very clear where we need to be focusing on. So one, I just think the simplicity and clarity can play a focusing role, both for this body as well as the leadership team and school leaders, as well as division staff. The school leaders, principals can drill down to the student level. And so I think that'll be incredibly valuable in our support and work with school principals in terms of when they are looking at students who may be experiencing a number of challenges or needs. They'll be able to see, for any student, a number of data sets. And so they can kind of look at attendance right alongside reading level, right alongside math, et cetera. And so I do think principals will be able, and their school child study teams will be able to have at a glance for students. But, but I, I do see this tool primarily at the highest level. And then we have, we have other tools we use for drilling down much deeper, more granular analysis, like we use something called Tableau to give our school leaders or teachers much deeper analysis by, you know, learning standard or the like. So this, to me, is the highest level. And then from here, we drill down into, you know, any problem areas or where we have success areas, you know, what are the patterns or trends that we can replicate for success areas?
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Rizzi. I saw in the chat, Ms. Page asked a question. Thank you, Ms. Page, regarding the timeline, the date to get started. Got that.
Oh, yes. So this is, we actually will be, we can push this out to school board members. You, we're working to, just this week, get you your email access. So you'll be able to access this via your RPS email. We are working, because this pulls data from lots of different places and you have to have a number of users. We can set up different user profiles in terms of accessibility for what you can see. We certainly don't want private student information available across the board. But we're working to figure out how we can have this up on our website for anyone at any point in time versus very, you know, clear points in time that align to our, our reporting calendar. Just again, that's a little bit more backend logistics we're working through. But the short answer is, it is live right now. We've uploaded all the current data for, you know, the, the most current year we have final data for. We've uploaded KPI data for the most current indicators we have. We'll certainly probably iterate on those as we go. Both you all might have input as well as our team. But for now, you all, this week, you all will be able to access Schoolzilla. You log on and you, you basically each goal goes goal one, goal two, goal three. And as you can see there, and you can then double-click. So for example, this on-time graduation rate is as of 1920 because that was our last most previous final result. But if you see these little indicators at the bottom here, you can look at by subgroup. You can change that little dropdown. You can go to the next one, you can look at year-over-year. Some of them have indicators like the highest five, the lowest five. And then at the very top, you'll, you'll see, this is the district profile. You can then click on a school and you'll see the same data by a school across all the goals and the KPIs. So that's a tool, for example, as a, like, you know, a principal director or Mr. Hughes or myself might use in working with principals to set goals or priorities. And, and then principals and teachers can then begin to drill down. And again, this is primarily a tool for principals and school leader teams because teachers tend to use much more granular data. But to the extent that it's useful, you know, I, I don't want teachers to go like they got to use another tool. This really is meant to be at the higher level, but we'll certainly make it available if we receive that feedback over time.
I must say, before the next person moves on, I know you have someone else, Mr. Young. This, this is excellent, this is long overdue. And as I'm thinking back to the comments that were made earlier when you gave your data report, Dr. Epps, this, this helps us to move forward together as a team, as Dr. Harris Mohammed was stating. I love the opportunity. I think we all are passionate about seeing the data. But you can't continue to move on and see what needs to be done if you don't have the data there before us. So I'm looking forward to that and I know everyone else is as well. So what I'm hearing you say is that before our meeting next week, we should be privy to something and we'll be, that's, that's what I'm talking about, overdue. So when we stop back in the fall, we have no other choice, as stated earlier, but to move up because it's in front of us every day and we are held accountable for that as well. So I thank you all for that. Mr. Young, is there anyone else regarding the dashboard that would like to speak?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Ms. White, and then yours truly has one brief question.
All right, Ms. White, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Epps, I just had a question, but I'm sure you kind of answered it. I was going to ask you what type of security level was provided on this? And will students' social security numbers be used or their student ID?
Great question, Ms. White. Social security, we do not use students' social security numbers for anything. Students have an ID number. And again, this is why right now we have very few users. And so we can hide key information based on user profile. So right now, for example, the board would not be able to see student ID information. And a principal would only be able to see student identifying information for students of their school only. Whereas myself or Mr. Kamras would be able to see, you know, across the district. But, but we are able to protect, we can set out user rights to hide and we, we are and we have hide student identifying information for anyone who is other than the school principal or a member of the leadership team right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. White. Ms. Young?
Briefly, my question wasn't terribly unlike Ms. White, but perhaps in a different direction. Dr. Dr. Epps, is there an opportunity? Have we had conversation, or conversations plural, with some of our providers? Like, for example, Nextup and YMCA, among others, about data sharing? I, I've heard a lot of complimentary things from said providers that relates to this, this school board, this administration and providing access to data, but still a, a request to obtain more so that, because there are students, our students are their students. We work hand in glove to ensure that groups like a YMCA and the Power Scholars Program this summer know how to target resources. So that, that is, that's a question that I'm really, it's a comment I'm posing as a question. But perhaps you could briefly speak to it now?
Sure. Well, I've, I've made it clear certainly to my team that we need to work with our providers to get them as much information as we can, responsibly can, to help them provide their own impact analysis as we do our own as well. We do work with legal, with Ms. Thompson and with Ms. Lilly to review data sharing agreements, as well as our technology team reviews those as well to make sure, to Ms. White's point, we're not sharing identifying student information, but can provide data in a way that gives, gives folks what they need. As you can imagine, that can, depending on the data requests, become quite time-intensive. And we currently, you know, we do not have a dedicated data team per se. We have a handful of folks that work on different things. I would just say, if there is a particular provider that you've been in touch with that doesn't feel like they're getting what they need, please put them in touch with me and we can, we can figure out where the, where the barrier is.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Mr. Young. Is anyone else before we move on?
No, ma'am, that's it.
All right, I'm excited about that dashboard. Best news I've heard in years. Great, congratulations, team. As we move forward, Board Action Items, number five. Receive for action, the Personnel Actions. Ms. Lee?
Yes, good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair. Board members, tonight, the Talon Office brings forth the following personnel actions for your consideration. The nomination of four employees, the change of contract of seven employees, the resignation of two employees, the furlough of four employees, the returning from leave of two employees, the retirement of one employee and the termination of one employee. Thank you.
All right. Is there any discussion, any questions? Mr. Young?
Madam Chair.
Before we move on to the motion?
Madam Chair, Doc, but Dr. Harris Mohammed and Ms. White have questions. I'm unsure if they pertain to closed or not, but in that order, ma'am.
All right. Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Ms. Lee, thank you so very much for this report. The furlough, the furlough information, can you share with the board what constitutes furloughed? An employee that's furloughed?
For those specific, Ms. Thompson?
Yes. Are you, Dr. Harris Mohammed, are you asking about specifics or are you just asking for a definition of, of furlough?
They're all the same rationale. So what would cause that rationale? What, what constitutes that rationale to be furloughed? There are different, there are different reasons for employees to be furloughed. But for these four reasons, what constituted that?
Okay, so we are going into closed for personnel, so we can talk about that in closed.
So that's a closed question?
Yes, because you're asking for specifics for, for the, for the people on the list.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. White, you have a question?
Yes. Ms. Lee, my question is, I'm not sure if it's closed or not, but it's just a general question. Can you share with us what type of retention program is in place?
In a retention program for retaining teachers, ma'am, or?
I should have said teachers, yes. What, what type of program is in place for retaining teachers?
So we work to retain teachers. Oh, Mr. Kamras, I'm sorry, I saw that you were speaking.
Go ahead.
Oh, Ms. White, thank you for that question. So retain, to retain teachers, we offer competitive salaries, an excellent benefits program, as well as professional development and support opportunities throughout the year through the academic office and the, the school's office.
Is there, is that what's in place? Isn't that for all teachers, though, what you just told me? Is that the, is that the, the retention program?
Well, to retain teachers, ma'am, we try to support them in providing the best instructional support for our students. And so we really work through and with the academic office and school administrators to support teachers so that they will stay with RPS.
Okay. I just, I just, the, the program that you had described to me seems like a all, all-around just program for all teachers. I thought this was something maybe specific. Do you have some type of meeting with teachers? Exit interview to see if there is something going on that you may can correct? I was just wondering what other things that you, that you did do to retain that teacher?
Sure. Thank you, Ms. White and Ms. Lee. Ms. White, right now, we're on the Board Action Items. But if you'd like us to have this added to the agenda under administrative business, we can have a whole presentation for a future meeting if you'd like.
No, I don't need that. Not really. I just, I mean, it was, I mean, she was answering a question, but you came in. So I wanted to finish what she was going to say. I know it wasn't going to take that.
Yes, it's.
I don't want a whole presentation.
All right. So Ms. Lee, would you go ahead with that? And so we can continue with the action items. And if anyone wants her to come back to give a presentation under a different topic, we can do that, board or administrative, that would be a good idea. So are we done with that? Ms. White?
I guess we are. If Ms. Lee says that's what, I mean, was that your final answer, Ms. Lee? I'm not sure.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Please.
So teacher retention is a very important and very large and complex issue. Ms. White, if you don't, if you don't mind, I'm, I'm happy to reach out to you directly and talk through how we're thinking about that over the long term. It, it touches on so many different facets, from the relationship with the principal to working conditions, to pay, to professional development opportunities, leadership opportunities, and so on. So what I would, what I would like to do is, if we could.
Maybe, maybe you want to do that for the whole board then because it seems like it's a complete difference in your description and Ms. Lee. So I, yes, Ms. Madam Chair, I think that should be a all-board discussion with Mr. Kamras letting us know the whole, all of the procedures.
Thank you so much, Ms. White. And we, we can gladly add that to an agenda, but it wouldn't be under Board Action Items. So let's put that under administrative business or either board business. But we can have that discussion. I think that's a good idea.
That's fine, thank you.
Thank you. 5.02, receive for action.
Madam Chair, we need, we need an action.
Oh, I'm sorry, a motion. Thank you so much, Ms. Rizzi. Thank you, thank you, thank you. All right. I'm sorry, Ms. Rizzi has her hand up. Mr. Young, anyone else after Ms. Rizzi?
And, and Ms. Gibson and the, and I believe will, because Dr. Harris Mohammed inquired something relevant to close, we'll have to do that subsequent, we'll have to vote on that issue subsequent. But yes, ma'am, Ms. Rizzi and Ms. Gibson.
All right, Ms. Rizzi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I want to return to Dr. Harris Mohammed's question because I think it's a valid one. If I were an RPS teacher and I see that people are being furloughed, it would create anxiety. And so I don't know that we owe the public some kind of explanation of why people are being furloughed, but it doesn't feel right to not have that be addressed at all.
I, I can address it without talking about the specifics of those individual employees. We have no furlough, broad furlough policy in effect whatsoever. We have no intention of furloughing employees. There are a few very unique circumstances which Ms. Thompson and Ms. Lee can speak to in closed. But there is no category of employees being furloughed. And that is not happening now, nor is it our intention to do so at all this year or in the foreseeable future. So I want to be 100% clear about that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rizzi. Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My questions have been answered, thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other questions, comments, Mr. Young?
No, ma'am.
All right, therefore, we're ready for the motion. May I get a motion to receive under Board Action, the Personnel Report given this evening? Dr. Shonda Harris Mohammed, would you please state?
Yes, ma'am. I move that we accept the Personnel Agenda as presented.
Is there a second, Ms. Page?
Second.
It's been moved and properly second to accept this report on Personnel Action. Are you ready for the question? Are you ready to vote? Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Door?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Ms. Jane?
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Rizzi?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Mrs. Cheryl Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Page?
Yes.
And Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. The motion has passed. Let's move forward to 5.02. Receive for action, Board Travel and District Activity Requests. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests this evening?
Yes, ma'am, we do. I have a district activity fund request form from Dr. Harris Mohammed. She's requesting the district activity for teachers who reside in the sixth district. She was like a host of. She was like a cost of $200 to get, provide gift cards to those teachers. Then I have Mrs. Mariah White and Ms. Stephanie Rizzi, who would like to attend the 2021 V S B A School Law Conference, which is held on June 4th, 2021. The cost of the conference is $195 each.
All right, um, we do have, Ms. Hadasco has a comment before we move forward. Is that correct?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Burke. Um, I wanted to indicate that um, generally gift cards are not allowable using um, uh, uh, public dollars. And so perhaps there may be a way to refine that request um, with greater specificity.
Yes, I remember those days. So um, and that's why I was gonna ask if we wanted to separate these, since it's two different topics. So let's, let's um, Dr. Harris Mohammed, we can make that change right now, if you'd like, to maybe have the $200 or 202, or was it $200?
$200 even.
$200, is this is for one teacher or?
The, these are for teachers who reside in the sixth district and work in Richmond Public Schools. That part wasn't added, but it's very, it must be clear that
Okay.
they work, they will have to work in RPS, not just be a teacher living in the sixth district. Uh, so if gift cards are not allowable, what is the policy, what does the policy indicate, Ms. um, Thompson?
So you're asking about the policy or about what, or about what Ms. Hadasco was saying, that we don't typically allow for public funds to buy gift cards that are just random gift cards?
Is that a pol- I'm, I'm asking, is that a policy?
So I would have to look up the actual policy number. That's, um, so, so that's why they're asking for more specificity. Um, you know, so I know, you know, in the past, it would have been, you know, Amazon or something for school supplies or something like that.
I was thinking Starbucks gift cards or something like that, that they could, you know?
There's a way in which to work with that. Um, Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes, ma'am.
We're meeting again on this coming Monday. Would you be so kind that we can resubmit that and rewrite that?
Sure.
So that we can, um, Ms. Collins?
Ms. Harris Mohammed?
Say what, excuse me?
I'm sorry, this is Nicole. I'm sorry, Ms. Harris Mohammed, if you want to reach out to me directly, feel free.
You can just go ahead and get that rewritten for that part, because there, there are two or three other things that could be done in order for her to get those for the persons that, that she's speaking. So we, we can work that out. Thank you um, for your flexibility. And um, so we still have on the table the Virginia School Board Association's law program for um, Ms. Rizzi and Mrs. White. And I also see that Ms. Kip- can you, Gibson would like to speak before we move forward with the motion, Ms. Gibson?
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. I, I thought that if, if the request was under $200, that this didn't require a board vote. I'm wondering.
No, under $100.
It's $100.
Is that correct, Ms. Thompson? It's $100? If it's 100 or under, we don't have, it doesn't have to be brought before the group.
I, off the top of my head is 100. I'm actually looking for a policy number now for uh, Ms. Harris Mohammed, so that I can just give her the policy number um, so that we can keep going and she and I can talk offline. So I can bring that back.
Yeah, um, Mrs. Collins may have that before her, because we've had to deal with that with a couple of other items. For 100 or under, you don't have to get board approval. But we're gonna work that out for the teachers, so that will be fine. So right now on the table, we have the two um, Virginia School Board Association board members that want to attend. May I get a mo- a motion to approve? And a second? Ms. Door, would you state it, please?
A motion to approve the district activity requests.
For Ms. Rizzi and Mrs. White. Thank you.
White.
And that, and seconded by?
Second.
Ms. Page. Are you ready for the question?
Madam Chair, I believe Dr. Harris Mohammed had a, had a question briefly.
Okay, Dr. Harris Mohammed?
I did. I wanted to see if I could have the opportunity to rephrase my statement now instead of waiting to the 19th, but the motion is al- the motion was already, I was trying to.
I entertain amendment to the motion, Dr. Harris.
Okay, I see. Otherwise, we really could do two motions. This is two different things either way. So
Okay.
Um, you're gonna amend the motion, then that's fine, because we could have come back and done that. All right, so we're gonna amend the motion. So would you make a motion, please, to amend the motion? And then Ms. Gibson has a comment.
Yes, I move to amend Ms. Door's motion to add, to purchase school supplies for teachers who work in Richmond Public Schools who reside in the sixth district.
For the amount of?
For the amount of $200, thank you.
Is that $200 per teacher or $200 total?
$200 total.
Oh, okay, okay. I don't know, I was thinking 200 per teacher, forgive me.
That's okay, because I didn't say it, specify.
Is there a second on that amended motion?
Madam Burke, I would, I would be fine to just, if it's okay with Ms. Page, to just admit, to just include that in our existing motion on the floor, um, which is to add to our motion to purchase school supplies for teachers who work in RPS and reside in the sixth district in the amount of $200.
All right, and we're up for, Ms. Page, were you in agreement?
Oh, that's fine.
Seconded, you seconded. Now we're ready for the question. Ms. Gibson, you have a comment. Ms. Gibson?
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm not muted. I thought I was. Um, so I did find the policy and the policy states it's a hundred dollar limit. Um, that's correct, but then you only need to submit the form if it's $500. Um, anyway, I, I think going down the road, it would be nice to, to amend this a bit, because using this time for small charges like this, I don't think is the best use of our time, so.
But it also helps us with the accountability piece with auditing and all too, so it's a good paper trail.
I don't mind the paper trail, you know?
Yeah, it's a good pa- paper trail, but for 200, for 100, you're right. You don't have to have, but we still fill out a form. We still have to fill out a form. I understand what you're saying. Thank you. All right, um, Mrs. Collins, we ready to vote?
Hey, Ms. Door.
Yes.
Mrs. White.
Yes.
Ms. Gibson.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Epstein.
Mrs. Rizzi.
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Yes.
Mrs. Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Page.
Yes.
And Mrs. Jones.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And Ms. Collins, do you have anything to drink, some hot tea or something?
Yes, ma'am, I'm drinking on it now.
Please do. I feel, oh, I can hear the poem. Oh, bless you, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, five point zero three, received for action budget transfers. And I think that we were given that as well. Um, five point zero three, I think that was an attachment. Um, who's speaking to that? Ms. Hadasco?
I will, yes, thank you. Um, so tonight, uh, there are two budget transfers uh, for your review and approval. Um, the first is a within um, area transfer around algebra readiness. Um, we're transferring uh, $224,000 out of the personnel and benefits line for some unhired uh, instructional assistants um, that uh, were not um, used in the virtual learning space. Um, and moving that to a purchase services line uh, within the same uh, category for PD and coaching supports for teachers with our online algebra supports um, two programs listed Agile Online and Math 180. Uh, the second uh, budget transfer is more significant, uh, given our virtual operating status for this school year. Um, we have over $3 million in funding normally contract, allocated to contracted transportation. And that's per semester, so you likely recall, uh, semester one, we transferred about $3 million from our contracted transportation to pay for both our teacher and student academic kits. Um, the budget transfer that is before you this evening is for the uh, $3 million for the second semester and includes a variety of things related to health and safety, facilities, student supports and celebrations, engagement, um, academics, as well as some basic operational items. I'm happy to take any questions, um, if, if there are any.
Ms. Young, do we have anyone listed?
Ms. Gibson.
Ms. Gibson and then Ms. White. All right, Ms. Gibson, then Ms. White, and then Mrs. Dr. Shonda Harris. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I would like to motion that the budget transfer vote and discussion be deferred to our April 19th, 2021 school board meeting, um, and to be included in the context of the overall budget for the 21, 22 school year.
All right, you heard the motion. Is there a second?
And, Madam Chair, I see a second from Ms. White and then uh, and then Ms. White has a question subsequent, uh, or other colleagues as identified.
All right, it's been moved by Ms. Gibson, seconded by Ms. White to approve this on the 19th to be included with the other budget. Are you ready for a question? Is there anyone listed for questioning before we vote? Is anyone listed? I think, um.
Madam, Madam Chair, we, there are a couple persons. I'm unsure if it pertains to the motion, but uh, Dr. Harris Mohammed and Ms. Page have requested the opportunity to speak. Un- again, unsure if it relates to the motion.
All right, so those persons listed to speak that you had before you are regarding this, um, the motion, are whom?
Yes.
Ms. Page is one? I heard someone say yes.
That was me. My question is pertaining to the motion, where the budget transfers.
Go ahead, Ms. Page.
So my question is, is this, are these budget transfers time-sensitive? And on, do the budget transfers meet the guidelines of our policy?
Um, I would indicate that, yes, they, they are time-sensitive, um, because this is not um, related to the 21, 22 uh, budget discussion. This is in our current fiscal year, uh, where we do need spend down uh, by the end of the fiscal year, and we try to close out our books in May. Uh, meaning we have about six weeks, so uh, board approval to transfer these dollars tonight is critical so that our schools have a chance to uh, ensure that funding is encumbered and spent before the end of the fiscal year. There's also a number of things that are, are um, uh, critical for the school year. So for example, attendance incentives. Uh, we want to be able to provide those dollars to our schools tomorrow, uh, so that they can begin um, uh, celebrating our students for improved or exemplary attendance, for example.
So follow-up question, so these budget transfers are not um, without, um, you know, anything abnormal as far as previous transfers that we have done related to, you know, to this same matter, or similar transfers?
Uh, yes, the narrative that um, I provided uh, outlines in detail uh, the amount and context for each one of the line items. Um, to, and all of them are things that the board, uh, for the most part, I would say is, is familiar with, uh, whether it's things such as interpretation, attendance incentives, um, athletic opportunities and um, a, a significant amount of funding for ongoing health and safety preparations.
Right, because I remember the board, we requested um, more details with the budget transfers like we've done in the past. So this is not anything unusual.
Correct. This is the same narrative that we've provided in the past. In fact, I would suggest more, more, even more detail.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Young, who else is listed?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. White and Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Ms. White?
Um, thank you, um, Madam Chair. I did have a question, Ms. Hadasco, before the motion. Um, you said something about the, can you go back and elaborate? Um, I think you said 224,000, it was for algebra?
Yes, the algebra readiness fund, there's two transfers tonight. Um, the algebra readiness fund was moving $224,000 out of personal, personnel and benefits, um, which had been held for additional instructional assistance that's supported in that programming. Um, and, and those positions were not necessary in the same way in our virtual context, because tutoring was provided um, to students in a different way. And so in order to maximize those dollars, we wanted to provide supports to teachers through additional uh, online professional development and supports, uh, rather than have those monies sit unused this year.
Okay, so um, so you said, I, I just heard you also say this was critical. So if you was to uh, this money tonight, how soon would the instruction go in for uh, the professional development?
Um, well, I do want to bifurcate the two, the two transfers. So the algebra readiness dollars um, uh, are different than the transportation uh, dollars. Um, the transportation transfer, which is the larger one, is the one that um, I would suggest is critical for tonight, uh, because those are local operating dollars, whereas the algebra readiness are state funds. That being said, I'd still like to transfer the algebra readiness tonight, so that we can get in place uh, teacher PD for this spring and summer and preparation for, for next school year. Um, and of course, obviously supporting teachers uh, this year as well.
Thank you, Ms. White. Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. The only question I have, Ms. Hadasco, is the algebra readiness, the, the funds that you're moving for the algebra readiness PD, are the teachers certified, math teachers, coaches, specialists, or are they um, who, who are you preparing PD for? In other words, you're asking us to approve the monies, but who is the, who are the monies being approved for? Like, are they certified? Are they tutors that?
Yes, uh, in the justification for change, it notes teachers and um, all of our teachers are uh, licensed. So yes, those are, those are licensed teachers. But thank you for that clarification.
Any more comments, Mr. Young?
No, ma'am.
All right, so the uh, motion is still on the table. This, I understand, is the budget, budget for 2020 and 2021. I do have a question. So the Bellevue and Carver piece, the 100,000 each, this goes back to the STEM program we talked about earlier?
Y- yes, it goes back to the programming that each of those principals um, had uh, decided that they wanted for their schools. So I believe that um, Bellevue is, is STEAM, which has an additional arts component, and Carver is STEM, yes.
And Carver is something SLICE. Mrs. Um, where was it, Ms. White? Was it STEM SLICE? What was it?
Hmm.
I know you mentioned it.
It's SLICE, it's not uh, STEM.
It's not STEM SLICE, it's.
So are you saying now, so now are you saying that this money is in here, included in this?
Yes, that's in the, that's in the three-page document, the narrative that was attached for the transportation transfer under the heading academics. So yes, Carver's money is included tonight in this transportation transfer. Another one of the urgent items that we wanted to be sure schools had opportunity to access immediately.
All right, then, Mrs. Gibson said she would like to speak to her motion. Ms. Gibson?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. So um, uh, it is, has, has been come to, this, this, the reason why I'm flagging this is because it's a large amount. We're talking about $3 million. And um, and I, I know that there was requests from myself and, and several of my board colleagues to get information about projected fund balances. And so this is, this money, had we not made the transfer, right, would be part of, of a fund balance transfer. So when we're talking about the fund balance and how we use money in the fund balance, that's a standard part of our board um, budget discussion. And as such, I, I think that we should talk about this money in the context of the overall budget. Um, there may be other uh, uh, items that we're talking about in, in the context of budget that, that we want to include or consider. And so, um, so it, it, I, you know, I, it concerns me to kind of pull things out, you know, kind of ahead of the game um, before, before we have that overall vote on the budget. The budget is a, you know, a robust discussion where we have public hearing and such, and so um, and so this is why I think, A, we, we are overdue in. And so and so this is why I think, A, we we are overdue in in talking about the budget again. And and B, I do think it would make sense for this to be part of that overall conversation.
I do want to share that we shared the context on the fund balance on February ninth in our updated narrative to our budget responses. So there is preliminary information there as well.
All right, again, colleagues, the motion is on the table, made by Ms. Gibson to defer the transfer of these funds until for the twenty twenty one school year, until our next meeting. And it was submitted by Mrs. White. Excuse me?
Madam Chair, I apologize for interrupting. I believe Ms. Rizzi also had a, had a question.
Ms. Rizzi?
I am, Madam Chair, and this is more of a comment. You know, I really do appreciate this document, the Transportation Budget Transfer Details. But as Ms. Gibson stated, this is a lot of money. It appears to be a lot of money to me, at least. And I would, you know, as you responded to Ms. Page, maybe this is, you know, standard operating procedure, but I would have liked to have seen a little bit more of a breakdown for where this money will go. But I just kind of wanted to express that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rizzi. Any other comments, Mr. Young, before we move forward with the vote?
No, ma'am.
All right, I'll repeat the motion to defer tonight voting on the presented transfers to up to the April nineteenth meeting made by Ms. Mo, Mrs. This motion, excuse me, Ms. Gibson and submitted by Ms. White. Are you ready to vote? Madam Clerk, please go forth.
Ms. Dorr?
No.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Rizzi?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
No.
Ms. Page?
No.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, so it's been passed that we will address the budget transfers at the next meeting. Next item on our agenda is five point zero four, received for action, proposed members for the Special Education Advisory Committee. Mr. Cameras, so into the cameras, you have some information on that?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Based on some new information we received from Ms. Thompson, we'd like to defer this to the next school board meeting. We just need to add a little bit more information. So if you don't mind, we would like to move that.
Thank you so much, and thank you, Ms. Thompson. All right, Administrative Business, six point zero one, receiving overview of Summer Twenty Twenty One Programming.
That is. Evening, that's me again.
All right.
Mr. Cameras, are you showing your screen or should I? Okay. Okay, as we discussed earlier, the need for robust summer programming is very clear. So we are expanding our summer programming. We will offer in-person summer sessions for pre-K twelve students. These will be in-person only, so there will not be a virtual option. Given, these will be full-day experiences that combine academics, enrichment, and social emotional learning. And we feel that we need students to be in a different setting other than virtual to really get the full benefits of of summer school. So here are the summary of dates. At the very highest level, we have five weeks for pre-K through eight. High school students will run two sessions, two three-week sessions that overlap, primarily for credit recovery so that we can, those will be done in time for July, the summer graduation in July, at the end of July. And then we'll have another high school session at the beginning of August for any students who want one more opportunity to convert the incompletes. If they earned an F, they can get credit recovery for that. In terms of programming, we plan to offer, again, a robust academic programming with partners. So we will provide the academic, the academic model, and we have external partners to work with us on both academics and enrichment. So for example, pre-K, and I should also say, all of these have an emphasis on academics with a particular focus on literacy. And you can see our partners there. We'll also have additional offerings for students who are English language newcomers for K-five students who are interested in engineering and middle and high school students, both for career exploration and driver's education. In terms of our projections, the the number, the first number, eight thousand six hundred and sixty are the number of students K-eight that fall below the grade level norm that we would want to offer summer school to. We typically have about a fifty percent enrollment rate for summer school. So we are planning for forty-two hundred students, which is more than double the number of students we've served in the past. And we're serving students for an additional week than we've historically done summer school for. In terms of staffing needs, we've projected staffing needs, thinking about either a twelve-student classroom or a fifteen-student classroom, depending on the number of students who commit to enrolling in summer school. I should also add that pre-K through five classrooms will have a TA or an instructional assistant with them as well. And then we also have a number of auxiliary and support positions that we would hire for summer school. Our locations are listed here, and these are based on feeder patterns. So you can see those. And then we've outlined our timeline for student registration, which is kicking off next week. And we will focus on enrollment for prioritized students in May. Once we've closed registration for them, students, if families want to send their students but they did not receive a prioritized invitation, they can certainly enroll if there is space available. And then you can see our timeline for hiring staff as well. I would just say that this will be our largest summer school effort to date. We're working with the Engagement Office to get the word out to families. And and we're excited about offering our students a fun and learning-filled opportunity this summer.
Thank you very much for that report, Dr. Epp. I'm glad to see the additional programs that were added. Excellent. I just wish we could have more students than what's listed and hope we'll get them all there. Mr. Young, do we have any questions listed?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Ms. Ms. Dorr, then Ms. White, and Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Ms. Dorr, Ms. White, and then Dr. Harris Mohammed. Ms. Dorr, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I, I'm sure, so I know it goes without saying that we have had challenges in attendance at summer school. So I think this is great that we're able to double our ability to serve students this summer. But I think what this presentation is missing is an outreach schedule on how we increase, how we ensure that we can take advantage of those increased seats. And specifically, I'd be interested in understanding if you know or how we can find out quickly, what are the barriers to families not taking advantage of summer school options? I'm sure there are obvious barriers, but potentially there are some that we haven't thought about. And what can we do to remove those barriers? So I would be interested in how we, as a board, can support getting the the word out there and any additional thoughts that you or the Office of Community Engagement have towards ensuring that we can fill those seats.
Sure. Well, thank you for that feedback, and we can certainly outline that. I think one thing I do want to note, oh, yes, we'll take that, we'll take that all under consideration. And I think the headline is, if we invite you to summer school, please come because it'll be fun and you'll learn a lot.
Sounds like Dr. Harris, excuse me, Dr. Shadi Harris's engagement program would really be involved in this as well and making sure that our our parents, students know what's going on and to make sure they participate. So we can keep that up to this up. All right, thank you, Ms. Dorr. The next person is Ms. White, is that correct?
Yes, Madam Chair. Dr. Epps, I might be missing something, but I've, can you just bring me back up to speed? And I might have missed it on page three. When we're, when you were talking about English and we just saw a graph where our children were slightly behind in the data. I'm just a little concerned, all the children will be going to school. Where is the small groups and the tutoring and the individual plans? How do these partnerships play a role in that?
They're a key part. So they're a part of us with the the whole school day.
Say again?
They're, they are a key part, and they are with us throughout the day.
So with, how will a child that needs tutoring or small group, how will they get that?
Well, I mean, almost.
In this summer program?
The, almost the entire design is small group and level-based instruction. I mean, our our classrooms start with twelve or fifteen, and we have two adults. And we have people, so they they are almost inherently small group.
And when you said level-based, what is, what is, what what that looks like? Can you tell me what that looks like for a math class? Or instance, when you're saying level-based, is that basic? Or is that looking at your data and you're trying to apply what you have seen on the data based on a, on a math test? What 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 does that look like?
It'll be based on students' reading levels and what they need based on that reading level. So using the various research-based programs we have in place, wherever students, it's called a Lexile level, for example, for reading. And wherever they are, there's a set of specific skills and activities and lessons that they need based on that level. So that is where their entry point would be for instruction. That's what I mean by leveled.
So is that also for math, too? Is that included for math or is this just English?
Well, there's not sort of a universal math leveler like Lexile, but we would certainly use data in terms of what students' gaps are to inform what small group instruction they need.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. White. All right, Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Dr. Epp, thank you for that presentation. I have one question. How many opportunities do the seniors have to remove an incomplete during the summer session? And the second part to that is, based on your response for the first part, would there be one or two summer school graduations?
So students have two summer sessions, two, so we have two different three-week sessions for credit recovery. We have an additional dedicated week for students to address, where we will be doing targeted outreach to students who maybe otherwise did not need summer school but would benefit from converting to complete their incompletes from spring twenty twenty. That would happen in August, and that would be separate from seniors or anybody graduating. Seniors would certainly go through traditional credit recovery. So I think students would have at least two opportunities, but frankly, they can do it at any point in time. We will just be doing our own targeted, this summer, we will just be doing our own targeted outreach in in August.
So for, I I know you mentioned seniors. I mean, I know you mentioned students, but I was asking specifically for seniors. How many opportunities will they, do they have?
Well, seniors have, first, students have had, I mean, lots and lots of opportunities since last.
During the summer session, though.
I mean, they had a ton, and we've been tracking with our high school principals very closely seniors. So I think it would be hard-pressed to have a senior who needs a credit converted from the incompletes right now, who hasn't taken care of that because we've focused so much on that group of students. But if they were in that circumstance, they would have the whole month of July in effect to to do that. And the high school program, it's a, it's a hybrid. So it's both in-person support with virtual online work at your own pace. So high school's a little different. So they have as much time as they need before it's time to graduate. They can, if they haven't done it, they can do it now, but most of our seniors have already taken care of that.
Okay, and final question, I'm sorry, I was listening to you, another one developed. So the district has really been focused on social, social emotional learning. Will that training be provided to teachers for the summer sessions or just counselors that are going to continue to receive that training?
No.
We're talking about doing something different.
Yes, summer school teachers will receive training in the ultimate model we land at.
On the SEL?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Young, do we have anyone else regarding the Summer Twenty Twenty One Programming?
Ms. Rizzi?
Ms. Rizzi, floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I am assuming, oh, and thank you, Dr. Epp, for the presentation. I'm assuming that the whole schools, I mean, we have to make that assumption, are ready or will be ready for safe learning on those dates. I'm most concerned with TJ on the twenty eighth of June. So that's the earliest start time you have?
Yes, we've, we've validated with facilities the, the, the locations that we're using based on work that needs to be done across our buildings, whether that's for COVID and safety work or other maintenance construction. So we've, we've validated those locations in partnership with our facilities team.
Okay, and then one more question, are we going to get a budget for this?
Yes, you will, you will, we can certainly report out on a budget. The budget certainly is going to be driven ultimately by enrollment.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Young?
Ms. White?
Ms. White?
This is just a quick question, Dr. Epp. Can we get a list of the schools that will be actual utilized? Because I know in my district, I have a couple of schools that have mold that needs to be removed.
The list is in the presentation.
Look, look on your agenda, Ms. Ms. White, and each, under each topic has the listing of the schools. That's on slide number seven.
I see it.
Yeah, you can see it also when you go into your board dots.
I know, I've seen it, but I want them to know that I have, my two schools, I do have a school with mold. I'm just letting them know for this summer location that needs to be fixed, repaired before you put any, before you put any students in the school for summer.
All right. Thank you. So, Mr. Cameras? So you'll let Mr., let them know so we can get that addressed with schools that you need to have that done? So make sure that we follow up. I got it.
I think, uh, Dr. Epp probably have it. I only have one school on that list.
I know, I see, I just didn't want to say it.
I'll follow up, Ms. White. Thank you.
Yes, thank you so much. Uh, any other discussion, Mr. Young, on summer school?
Ms. Gibson?
Ms. Gibson, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to ask that the administration provide budget details for the summer school program. And I I would, you know, I'd like to know, you know, if there would be an option to include a virtual version. I think that it seems like a disconnect that we would not have a virtual option for the summer, but then have a virtual option for the fall. And I'd also like for there to be perhaps more clarity around how the partners are integrating in, you know, in in the program overall. Just to get clarity on on what the district is doing versus what the partners are doing.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Young. Anyone else?
Yeah, ma'am, that's it.
All right, well, Dr. Epp, we thank you so very much for that
Thank you.
summer school programming and also the suggestions regarding the building and the budget and other options. All right, we can move to six point zero two, update on the school year twenty one twenty two reopening plan.
Thank you, Madam Chair and School Board. I just want to say a few words of introduction, and then I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Epp, Ms. Hadasco, and Dr. Harris. Dr. Harris. Uh, the presentation we have tonight is really a look at three aspects of our reopening plan. The academic portion, the health and safety portion, and the engagement portion. I do want to be clear, uh, not only for the board but for the public, this is not a comprehensive reopening plan, uh, that is in development, but we wanted to give the board and the public and our families and staff a sense of how we are thinking about things for the fall. Uh, wanted to make sure that if there's any feedback, we were able to hear that and then move forward. Uh, most importantly is going to be, uh, our monitoring of uh, social distancing guidelines and the impact that that has on the number of children we can have physically in a classroom at any given time. And Dr. Epp will share a little bit more about that. So, uh, with that, I'm going to share my screen and turn it over to Dr. Epp.
Thank you. Um, so as we look to reopen in the fall, um, reopen with love two-point-O, we have five priorities and you'll see that these, um, are very similar to the priorities we established back in, um, uh, last spring, uh, but, but primarily to extend grace and love to all of our students. Make sure that we provide, um, both in-person and virtual options and focus on health, safety and communication with our families. Looking at academics, um, we are proposing, um, uh, what we'll call our preferred option is in-person instruction, five days a week, available pre-K through twelve. Um, and just a couple of notes here is that, um, pre-K through eight, uh, students selected, um, basically this option, you're opting in for a full quarter um, and for high school for a full semester. Um, and that is because, uh, you know, the logistics, um, we want to make sure that students are set up for success and that we don't have a sort of revolving door. Um, but also we believe, um, whatever information families are using to make their decision, um, uh, nine weeks is enough to sort of give them a chance to reverse that. Um, I'll say, uh, the option two-point-A is if physical distancing beyond, if physical distancing is, uh, um, uh, not completely, um, uh, available per CDC guidelines um, or state guidelines, we would offer hybrid. And we have two hybrid options. One would be alternating days. So, um, you know, uh, students would do in-person learning two days a week and asynchronous virtual learning two days a week. I want to be clear, this is not teachers teaching both students in person and virtually on the same day. Teachers would teach students in person and they would assign the students who are at home asynchronous work on the days that they are at home, learning from home, um, which is an important distinction for our hybrid model. Um, and, uh, again, similar, we'd want you to, similar to the in-person and virtual, you would, you would have the choice to change at the nine-week mark or the semester mark for high school. We could also do a hybrid model with alternating weeks. So instead of doing, you know, Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday, we could do every other week. So a student is in school five days a week in person. Um, and while the other group, uh, is at home, learning asynchronously, meaning they are doing assignments and submitting them to their teacher, they're not receiving live instruction in both of these models. Our hope is that we're able to, um, you know, our hope is that by the time September comes, we will not need a hybrid option um, because we know that that's suboptimal for everyone. We also are offering a virtual option for all families who are, um, despite all of our mitigation efforts, are just not yet ready or comfortable coming back to school um, due to safety reasons be, um, around COVID, or perhaps virtual has just really worked for them. Um, and it's something they want to continue. We know that there are some families and students for whom this has been a positive experience. So, um, we would do this pre-K through five, we would offer, um, and we would run through our own school division. Um, we would hire separate teachers for this group, um, based on student enrollment. And therefore, they would follow the RPS calendar and their first day would be September eighth. For middle and high school, we would partner with Virginia Virtual Academy, um, which is run through the VDOE. And, um, they would offer, they have a specific daily schedule and that, students who choose that option, they do start school on the twenty-fourth and Virtual Virginia provides the teachers and the coursework, um, uh, in this case. Again, students who select these options, if a, a student starts virtual and wants to go back in person, at the end of the first quarter, they can make that switch. Um, for high schools at the end of the semester. And the rationale for that is, um, given for high school, our four-by-four calendar. Um, and for pre-K eight, we think of, you know, keeping learning tight and organized for a full quarter, um, will be most beneficial. Um, all right, happy to talk through, uh, some of our health and, and safety protocols. Um, what's written here tonight is, of course, based on current CDC and BDH guidance and, um, certainly hope that's subject to change as we enter the next five months before school starts. Um, but this provides an anchor for our conversation. Um, the recommendations that are on the subsequent pages are standardized across all schools. Um, each school will, of course, create their own health and safety plan that reflects unique context, but all plans will include the key mitigation strategies of symptom checking, masks, um, hand hygiene, physical distancing, uh, air quality measures and cleaning protocols. Um, and I'll just walk very briefly through, uh, some of those. In terms of daily symptom screening, we'll be asking folks to do a daily symptom check at home, um, as a family before they come to school. We'll be providing opportunity for a temperature check, uh, once students are at school. For staff and visitors, we'll be using Raptor, which is our sign-in, um, system to ask the same questions around screening. This will also help with contact tracing, um, as we're able to, uh, log folks electronically. And then for anyone who may, um, exhibit, um, initial, um, symptoms, uh, we are building in each school supportive care spaces. They've been referred to in the past as isolation rooms. This is a, a bit, uh, softer, um, in order for nurses to do continued assessment and, um, be a space for a student to wait before their parent picks them up. We are recommending that masks be worn all day by students, staff and visitors. Uh, masks are not a replacement for face shields, bandanas or gaiters and need to be worn even if someone is alone. Um, for hand washing and hand sanitizing, all classrooms have hand sanitizing stations and students will have the opportunity at intervals to either wash their hands or sanitize their hands. Um, staff will be monitoring bathrooms and sinks to be sure that, um, supplies are, um, always fully stocked and we continue to work through the bathroom, uh, work that, um, you can uh, assess its progress in the RPS reopening dashboard. Right now, current CDC guidance related to distancing, um, says that elementary desks should be three feet apart and middle and high school desks should be three feet apart when a community is in low, moderate or substantial community transmission. Uh, right now, Richmond is in substantial community transmission. So these recommendations are anchored on the three feet apart rule. Um, you'll see guidance for each one of the grade level bands, preschool, elementary, middle and high, um, around ways to maintain distancing. Um, we will, uh, mark desks for student grouping and of course be cognizant of the use of communal spaces. Um, in terms of meals, uh, we're also, uh, looking at, uh, creative solutions and having children eat in a combination of the classroom and cafeteria, given that masks are removed for eating, um, and therefore CDC guidance recommends a slightly greater distance. Um, schools will develop their own dismissal procedures as part of the health and safety plan that's based on their school size layout and the types of transportation, uh, that students are taking, um, to get home. Uh, the next section outlines greater details about transportation. We'll continue, of course, to provide bus transportation. Um, however, parents, uh, may choose to, uh, drive or walk with their students. Uh, we have added or in the process of adding air filtration on all of the buses um, and the social distancing and mask, uh, rules will apply for, uh, buses as well. Um, the only notable, uh, thing to call out for car riders and walkers, um, is that a symptom check will be taken with the student before the parent or caregiver leaves, um, lest there is any issue. Um, in terms of air quality, um, Jason, did you want to talk a little bit about, uh, this here?
Yes. Thank you, Michelle. Um, I did want to note, uh, that we are recommending a shift from bipolar ionization to in-room HEPA filtration units. We received a lot of additional feedback and in particular at the urging of Board Member Door who connected us with some resources. Um, and I, uh, reached out to, um, some experts, uh, in the field as well to get even further information. Feel that the best and actually most cost-efficient approach would be to go with standalone in-room HEPA filtration units, uh, in every classroom and multiple units in, um, common areas as well. So I, I do apologize for the, um, uh, change in strategy, but I thought it was important uh, to bring that to the board because I do feel it is the right step based upon all the feedback and science that we have examined. Um, so I did want to note that here in the presentation and, uh, unless there's, uh, any significant objection, that is the, the path we will be taking. Michelle, can you, uh, just finish out the, the rest of the air quality items?
Uh, yep. Um, we also, you can refer to the reopening dashboard also posted on board docs, which shows the other HVAC preventative maintenance, including upgrading air filters and any other identified, um, uh, repair work that is needed.
Good evening, everyone. In regards to engagement, we are excited to engage all of our families as we plan for reopening two-point-O. And we want to make sure that all of our families, and you can see the goals here, really understand and feel informed about their choices, that they're confident in the health and safety measures we're taking and that we have consistent ways of getting them relevant and timely information. Um, so what you'll see here is engagement, it does not live with one team. It is going to take the work of everyone. So we broke it out in some of the division things we're going to be doing, but also the school-based, um, outreach and engagement that's essential, knowing that our building leaders are experts on their students and families. So on our division level, you'll see everything from the different stakeholder councils we're engaging, um, our division outreach platforms, family support line, division community walks. Um, and then when you get down to our school base, engagement and outreach strategies, we want to make sure that we're consistent across all schools. So every RPS school will hold a community conversation in the spring as well as a summer. Um, socially distanced, low contact, either walk up or drive by to welcome, um, either new families or returning families back to school. So we want to be intentional about our engagement efforts, but we want to make sure that there's some core engagement, um, efforts that are going to happen across every school. So we'll be working with principals and teachers to really prepare everyone on a school-based level as well as division. Um, we also want to make a really strong pivot to our family liaisons becoming experts in neighborhoods. And you'll see here some of the neighborhoods, um, that we're starting with and really getting to know, you know, the barber shops, the local places, the corner stores, the credible messengers, everyone in the neighborhood, our family liaisons. We know this is going to be the way we build meaningful and trusting relationships with our families is being visible and staples in the community. So right now, our liaisons are doing asset mapping and making those connections and we'll continue to add different communities as we move forward. Here, you'll also see a list of community walks that are taking place. You're more than welcome to join. But again, how are we visible? How are we present? How are we meeting families where they are? And that means holding school-based community conversations as well as mobile community conversations. And these are some different places in the community. Again, just a jumpstart, but we're going to continue to add and grow these lists more and more. And then, of course, we heard from you, great feedback as well as from our families on our regional community conversations. So we want to start early, start now and can continue these throughout the spring and the summer. Um, these are just some ways we're going to engage our families. But again, we are open to explore new and innovative ways as we prepare for, um, this fall. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so very- Thank you so very much, Mr. Young. Who do we have listed?
Ms. Gibson and Ms. Door.
All right, Ms. Gibson, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, and I am thankful that we have this presentation to review. Um, I know that this is information that the community has been, um, eagerly awaiting. Uh, you know, I, I do have several, um, several concerns. Um, first of which is that, um, you know, the word quarantine doesn't exist anywhere in this presentation. And so, um, you know, for folks that I've heard that, that have had a chance to review the, the document, um, you know, that's an immediate thought, that question that comes to mind is if, if there is a case, what is the district going to do? And I think that needs to be a core component to what our reopening plan is. Um, I think that, um, I'm thankful that there is a virtual option that, um, that we are exploring. Um, uh, however, I have, I have considerable concern that for students in grades six through twelve, that we are essentially outsourcing that virtual option to, uh, for-profit online charter. Um, this is, uh, a, a service, you know, that should be in-house, that Virtual Virginia, you know, is, um, outsourced to K-12 Incorporated. So, um, that's something that I, I, that concerns me, um, on multiple levels. One is, you know, uh, obviously for-profit companies always kind of raise a flag, uh, for one. But for two, um, you know, I, I, we have yet to see the results of the Vava program. Um, you know, what are graduation rates looking like? How, how is this program performing? And so I think before we, um, have students, uh, you know, attend that, I, I, I think it would behoove us to get more data from, uh, you know, on how the, the, the program is performing right now. Um, and then, uh, two other pieces that I think are really critical here, one is transportation. Um, you know, we do not have a sufficient number of, of buses as it is. And, and so, um, you know, having a, a, a real understanding of exactly how that's going to work, how many students will be on the bus, um, you know, that, that I think is something that we'll need to have a good amount of clarity around. Um, and then finally, um, you know, as we're talking about air filtration, you know, I, I think the, the, uh, you know, the elephant in the room is the, is, is our, is our windows. And how, you know, what is our plan to make sure that people can actually open up a window and let the air in the room? Um, you know, I'm sure that there are inventions that are doing phenomenal things, but, um, but there's, but there's nothing that's going to replace actually bringing fresh air into our, into our buildings. Um, and, and, and so I think it would behoove us to make sure that that, that capability, um, is something that we're exploring. Thank you.
So, Ms. Jeff, was there someone else before, right after Mrs. Gibson, Mr. Young? If I saw the superintendent's, um, hand go up as well.
Yes, ma'am, it's, uh, in the following order, uh, Ms. Door, Ms. Rizzi, uh, the superintendent and Ms. White.
I'm going to, um, take privilege here. Mr. Camus, did you want to respond to that program?
If I may, Madam Chair, uh, there are two different programs. Unfortunately, they have very similar names. Uh, one is Vava, that Ms. Gibson, I believe you're referencing, which is a private, uh, organization run through K-12 Insight. That is not what we are referencing. We are referencing a state-run program. So this is run by the Virginia Department of Education. It is a public online option called Virtual Virginia. Uh, it, uh, ensures that our students remain on the RPS books. Uh, they, uh, count towards our ADM. They can participate in sports and other school activities. Um, and we pay a tuition fee in essence to the VDOE. Uh, they hire teachers and run, uh, the program through their online platform. So these are two distinct things. I just want to make sure that the board and the public understands, uh, this is not Vava. This is not a private company. This is the VDOE's state-run Virtual Virginia program.
Thank you. I just wanted to quickly respond, that is reassuring. I, I, I would like to understand, um, uh, I guess I would like to know- I guess I would like to know more about what the VDOE is doing then, you know, this is something new that we would be basically sending our kids to the VDOE. This isn't a service that they've provided before. So so more detail in terms of what that is. And and you know, I think it would be worthwhile to explore doing this internally, not only for our students, but we're going to have some staff that may want to work virtually as well. And so and so I just want to make sure we pursued all of our options. But thank you for that clarification.
And I think you raise an important sort of decision point that we as a administration have been grappling with. And I want to make sure it's very clear to the board and to the public on the virtual piece. It is in essence, do we do it ourselves or do we leverage the state option? This gets a little bit complicated, but I do think it's important for the board and and the public to kind of get into all of this. If we do this ourselves, which certainly we have capability to do particularly after this year, it becomes very hard to do so with our existing staff. Because I'm going to give you just a quick example to try to make clear why this gets complicated. You can imagine an elementary school where, let's say, several teachers at that elementary school in RPS wanted to teach virtually at a virtual academy that that we run. But very few of the kids at that elementary school want to participate in a virtual academy. What that means is we would have to identify other teachers in RPS who would teach in person at that school, meaning we would be moving teachers all around the district, which is our right to do. But I think would be highly disruptive in a way that would not serve our students well. And so what we are proposing, I want to be very clear is to use some of our federal dollars to actually hire additional personnel on top of the ones we already have. And let me actually say positions, not personnel, to create additional positions for a virtual academy. If some of our own teachers currently want to work at that virtual academy, they would apply just like they would for any transfer. And if they went from an in-person school to the virtual academy, then we would hire someone to fill their spot. But that's very different from using our existing personnel, our existing number of positions and moving everybody around to make it work. What we have learned from talking with teachers and administrators and families in other divisions that have done the what I call switcheroo is it's just incredibly disruptive, particularly when you have families changing their minds after a quarter or a semester. So given that, we wanted to be judicious in how many new positions we added on and thought it would be best to limit it to pre-K through five and to use the state resource for six to twelve. The reason it is very important that we have clarity on this and and frankly, we need clarity. If not tonight, then then I think at our next meeting is because we need to go to our families and have them articulate to us, not in a preferential way, but in a decision-making way. By the end of May, which path they want to take so that we can prepare accordingly. Which means we're going to have to go out with a one-to-one survey and then do everything humanly possible to hear from every last family. And I think you know that based on past survey practices is it's very challenging to hear from every family. And so it's going to take quite a bit of time for us to be able to get all those responses, know how every family wants to proceed next year and then build our system accordingly. So it is very important that the board and the public wraps their head around this notion of a pre-K to five virtual academy that we would run internally. A six to twelve program that we would use the Virtual Virginia program for that the pre-K to five would be additional positions on top of what we currently have to run that virtual academy in-house. So I just want to make sure that's clear. I'm glad to answer any follow-up questions, but nailing this down is a step that has to happen before we go to families because I don't think families will feel equipped to be able to make a decision unless we tell them exactly how everything is going to work. Think otherwise, they're going to feel a bit hoodwinked and won't be able to make a decision. So I want to be able to go to families and say, look, if you have an elementary student, you have basically two options. One is in-person five days a week, which we hope we're going to be able to do. If we can't, we have some backup options with a hybrid. Your other option is to go to the in-house RPS Virtual Academy. If you have a high school student, your option is to come five days a week in person. Again, we have backup options if that's not going to work for social distancing reasons. Or to participate in a virtual option run by the VDOE's Virtual Virginia Program. And we would include information about what is Virtual Virginia, just like we would include information about what is our virtual academy going to look like. And then families are going to have to make a decision and that's going to have to be a binding decision. Pre-K to to eight would be a binding decision for at least the first quarter. And for high schools, it's going to be a binding decision for the first semester so that we can plan and serve our families accordingly. So that's the, that is the most important thing that needs to be settled. We're giving you our our recommendation based on extensive conversations, not just with all of my councils and and our reopening committee and our neighbors and folks around the country and the Council of Great City Schools. But if there is some strong difference of opinion, we would need to hear it now and work through that. Because the longer, you know, we wait down the road, the longer it is before we we survey families. And so I did want to just lay out the the crux of of the decision that we're we're facing right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Camus, for that clarification on Virtual Virginia and the other information of which will move forward. Mr. Young, you were sharing with me who else was listed to speak.
It's Ms. It's Ms. Door, then Ms. Rizzi, then Ms. White, and then Dr. Harris Mohammed.
All right, Ms. Door.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would also like to see a plan of action for quarantine. Agree with Ms. Gibson. I also appreciate the information on the bipolar ionization. Thank you for continuing to look into that. I think it highlights what we talked, we talked about in a number of meetings is just the need for an independent review of major purchases. And so I still am interested in the administration presenting what that can look like to ensure that we are talking to the best minds in the country as we're making operational improvements. Secondly, I appreciate the information on the windows. I've asked about this at a couple of meetings and just want to clarify that I agree that replacing windows while would, while it would be excellent is, you know, challenging to do across the district in advance of reopening. But what I am interested in is are there any creative things that we can do to just get the windows open? And so I'm wondering, is there any, are there any ways that we can simply low-budget? Just find a way to open some of our windows that are currently shut. So if the administration could offer a perspective on Monday, next Monday or tonight on that, that would be great. I think there could be potentially be some opportunities to engage the community in a window blitz. And then third, wondering, you know, I, given the academic results we just discussed, I think I would have serious concerns about us having the capacity to run a whole other secondary system. So I'm just wondering, the Virtual Virginia option, while not, you know, anyone's first choice, COVID is not anyone's first choice. Wondering if you could speak to the certification of Virtual Virginia teachers specifically? And if we have, I believe we have used Virtual Virginia in the for electives classes. So wondering if you could speak to that.
Yeah, just very briefly, all Virtual Virginia teachers are Virginia licensed teachers. You are absolutely correct. We have used them for various elective classes in the past, I think some foreign languages and others. They have expanded their offerings going into next year and provided discounts, knowing that many school divisions are in the same situation that we're in, trying to to juggle many competing priorities. On the windows, I will say like we are doing an assessment of what is possible. As you note, it is not possible, and I want to be very clear and honest about this, to replace all of our windows. That's not going to happen. Some of our schools were built for windows not to open. In fact, I believe most of our new schools are built that way for security reasons. And while there are many ways to get a window to open, some of those ways preclude the window then from closing, which is an important consideration for for security. All that said, we are taking a look at that. We know the most effective means of improving air quality is getting fresh air. So that is something we will report back on soon.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Rizzi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I'm glad we're thinking about consistency and stability and, you know, making sure our kids know what's going to happen and who they're going to be with for a good length of time. I don't know that that was a priority when we had that big year-round school discussion. Hopefully it will be the next time it comes around. You know, with the high school and changing to four by four, you know, as a parent of a high schooler, that was kind of, and a person who teaches, you know, courses at VCU that meet every single day, because four by four, well, that kind of schedule didn't necessarily work for the class I teach. I felt kind of blindsided as a parent, not being even told. My son told me he was switching to four by four. It was not something I felt was something that was widely, you know, publicized or even, you know, I don't remember any community engagement around it at all. And I'm still not sure how I feel about that change. It's a pretty major change, but we'll live with it. As far as Virtual Virginia is concerned, I know that that is offered at my son's school right now for electives. And I know that it's also really tough, even for self-motivated students. So I'm hoping that there will be some support provided for our students, you know, to to help keep them on track with that. And I had a question about the, you know, yeah, it's ideal to have windows that open. I totally feel strongly about that, but I and I also didn't know that there were some schools designed that just, you know, the windows were never meant to open. That seems a little interesting. But to the HEPA filters, are there going to be upgrades on filtration systems in individual schools?
Yeah, all of our HVAC systems are going through a process of filter upgrades right now. And as that process occurs, if there are any maintenance things that pop up, we're addressing those along the way as well.
And how about support for Virtual Virginia? My man, I'm sure there will be live teachers around to help with support.
Do you want to speak to that?
Yes, part of our plan is to have dedicated mentors for teachers, for students who opt into the Virtual Virginia model. Also want to note for the secondary level, you know, there's so many different certifications and courses that are needed. And Virtual Virginia has offered, you know, well beyond electives in the past for students across the Commonwealth. So academic, core academics is central to their program as well. But we would certainly have mentors for those students as part of our program design.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rizzi. Ms. White?
Yes, Mr. Camus or Dr. Epps can probably answer this question. I would like to see a roll-up in the, how many of the how many of the filtrations do we need and what what is the total cost? And I'm a little lorry of, I'm not understanding why we're having a we have them both, a virtue and in-school for fall. And I see a way, a plan put together, but I don't see the same thing as far as summer school. Some of those things are missing out. And I know Ms. Hades was saying that the schools will be in charge of their own safety and health plan. I'd like to know who will be checking and balancing, check, who will be there checking balances when we want to make sure that they are in compliance with CDC. And I have one more question, but you may want to answer that one. And I'm just kind of feeling a little lorry in the taking our teachers out and using virtual academy. So we are going to pay out our budget probably for a semester, five hundred and fifty dollars per student for virtue. Virtue Academy, then to use our own teachers, some of our own teachers, and then they have to apply. Because I know we have, we will have a lot of teachers who probably that's the only way they can, you know, teach would be virtue. So to have them apply to a virtual academy, just to actually keep their jobs, some teachers may not even be fascinated. Some teachers may have underlying conditions. So I'm not sure if that's fair to our teachers.
If I may, Madam Chair? Thank you, Ms. White. I do want to note by the fall, every staff member, frankly, every adult in Virginia or every individual sixteen or older will have had ample opportunity to receive the vaccine. And so come the fall, staff are going to be required to work in person. If you choose not to be vaccinated, that is certainly a personal choice that that one can make. But we are going to be beyond the point where it will be viable for us to continue to function as a school system and have significant numbers of of staff members choose to continue to work virtually in an environment where one has ample opportunity to be vaccinated. We certainly understand there are going to be some very unique circumstances, given some very unique medical conditions and we'll we'll address those humanely and appropriately. And there are avenues to do so through FMLA and other actions such as that. But come the fall, we are going to need to be set up to provide in-person instruction for one hundred percent of our students. And if anything comes out of the map data we just looked at, it's that our children desperately need to be back in school.
But what about this summer?
Well, in-school in-person is what I'm saying this way, which is why frankly, I I don't know any child who is going to benefit this summer from additional time in front of a Chromebook. And we feel it is important to invest all of our energy and our resources into providing the safest and most exciting and robust in-person summer school experience for as many kids as we possibly can. And that and that's what we're setting out to do. The reason we are offering a virtual option for the fall is we know that until every child is vaccinated and every adult is vaccinated, some families just aren't going to be comfortable sending their children. And that's that's their personal choice. And so we want to be able to be responsive to that. But our preference and our goal and our North Star is that we are able to provide in-person instruction five days a week for every single RPS family that wants it. And I think we have an obligation at this point to do so. I think it will be safe. And I think it is academically and socially and emotionally critical that we do exactly that.
And Mr. Cameras?
I believe you're muted.
You're muted. You're muted, Ms. White.
Mr. Cameras, on on that safety that you have said, is it possible that the school board members who would like to attend the schools to ensure that the protocol, safety protocols measures are in place can take a visit of those schools?
Absolutely. And I want to be clear what Ms. Absolutely. And I want to be clear, what Ms. Udesco was referencing is there are going to need to be school specific plans that translate our division wide health and safety policies into practice for their school. For example, each school is going to need to determine exactly where do students come in every day? How exactly is their temperature going to be checked? Are they going to have one direction hallways, things of that nature, which we cannot in every case mandate from the central office because there are just unique aspects to every school. And so every school will have to take our overall policies and then apply them to their specific buildings, their specific communities. Those plans will be reviewed and vetted and approved by the leadership team. And of course, school board members are welcome to see how things are working. We, you know, the more eyes, the better to make sure that everything is healthy and safe for our kids and our staff.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. White. And Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. I have a couple of questions. And then, Mr. Cameras, because of the sake of time, I would like to ask my three questions, but email you the others if that's okay?
Sure.
Okay. And I will add the board member. So they can see the questions as well. Okay. The first question is, and you might have, you might have addressed this. Dr. F might have addressed this. And if you did, Dr. F, I apologize. Will we allow parents to adjust their requests from hybrid to virtual and vice versa? If so, how will the cabinet maintain the data and request? So that's the first question, because we know that that's going to happen. They may start one way and then kids see their friends are going and then they were virtual, then they want to come to school. Second, how will Aspen be used to record the data for ADM purposes and daily average attendance? And then the third question, can you provide clarity on how tran- how transportation has been updated to address the change that we're going to? And can someone, the COO, maybe provide an update on our facilities? And they can be addressed in any order?
Do you like me to take the first one, Mr. Cameras?
Yes, please.
So yes, each for pre K eight, each quarter, families will have the choice to switch between options. So if you start virtual and you decide you want to go back to in person, you can do that at the beginning of the second quarter. For high school, it is at the semester level. And the reason for that is once you start with your four by four schedule, we really want you to stay with that course with, you know, your teacher to get your credit. In terms of the data specifics, that's one of the examples of the many decisions and details we have to work out based on the model we're going to follow. So everything that you just asked in terms of, we certainly will have identifying fields in Aspen to indicate which students are virtual versus in person per quarter and per marking period. And then the detail, you know, we certainly have to partner and work with virtual Virginia to work through the details on ADM and such. So those, those are certainly things we'll need to figure out. We're just not yet at that point until we confirm this is the direction we're going.
Okay, very, very quick follow up. And I, and I heard that. I just want us to keep in mind that we are not inputting this data. When, when you switch, when a family starts virtual, and I'm using this as a very quick example, so we can move on. And then in the middle or at the end of a nine week or at the end of a semester, and then they want to go in the other direction. Someone is going to have to maintain that data input all the time. Are we willing to do that? And I'm just asking us to think about that, because again, this is what I do every day. It is a tremendous amount of work. It is a tremendous amount of data upkeep. It is a tremendous amount of asking people to constantly record and request and input and remove and revise because Shonda has started virtual and now Shonda wants to go to hybrid in the middle. We are going, and I'm just, I'm just making this suggestion. I'm not in any way putting a demand. I'm asking us to review what we just stated, because it sounds good and it sounds like something that we can do, but I'm telling you, it's not that easy. Because it has to coincide with whatever learning management system you're using. It also has to sync with the Aspen data system that you're using. And I don't know if we're there yet. Because we didn't even have an accurate clauses space to record data. So how are we going to change stuff? Because Shonda started virtual and then now Shonda wants to go hybrid. I'm just asking that we consider that again, because it's not as easy as you presented. And Dr. F, I really appreciate that. So
I very much appreciate you naming the incredible complexities. And that's just one. I think we feel we're presenting these options because we feel it's our responsibility to provide those families. But I appreciate naming, and I think this is important for folks to understand, is just how much will go into executing this in addition to running the traditional school day program. Thank you.
And I said that in support of you. Let me say that publicly, because it's a lot of work, Dr. F. I'm, I'm serious. And I just don't want you to or your team to take that on. And then you have Dr. Harris come back and ask 25 questions because I'm coming with them, right? So I just really wanted to stress that because it's not as easy as you described it through a verbal pictorial representation. So thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Page?
Yes. So I just wanted to support. I agree wholeheartedly for, you know, a plan for the possibilities that, you know, quarantine capabilities. If in case we run into the situation, because I think probably all localities have experienced outbreak at certain schools. So I think that would be a good ideal idea to have a plan in place. You know, for cases such as that. But also just wanted to comment. So getting back to the question, Dr. Harris asked the question about data and the input, the complexities of that. Are we thinking about having designated designated person persons to fulfill that role?
We, we do have an individual who manages the data that flows into our system. So yes.
Okay. All right. That's what I thought. But just one next question. And then next is more of a comment. So I can tell that the administration and our custodial staff, just everybody, all hands on deck have truly been working because I have been visiting the schools in my district and have witnessed the PPE equipment that's already in place and a lot of the schools and just in preparation for our students and staff returning. So just want to say thank you. Because this is not going to be an easy task. It's going to be all hands on deck. So I just want to comment on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Is anyone else to speak to this?
Ms. Gibson?
Ms. Gibson, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a few quick requests or suggestions for the administration. One, I think it would be really helpful to do an additional survey to both teachers, staff and and families at this point to see where folks are. I'm curious if people expect to have an interest, you know, in terms of families for for virtual options. And I, and I wonder if there might be perhaps more interest for families that have older children than have younger children. I'm not sure, but I, I think that would be interesting to gauge. And likewise with, with our, our teachers and staff to see, you know, where, where they're at. You know, we've been talking about teacher retention and I, I recognize that we want to make sure that everyone is, we prefer that everyone is committed to, to in person, but I also want to make sure that we don't lose folks on this, on this issue. I would request that at an upcoming meeting, I, I said it was insightful, Ms. Rizzi's point about the the, the vigor or rigorsness of the, the virtual Virginia curriculum. And also thinking about Ms. White's comments earlier in our, our meeting, we talked about the basics. So we are, just to understand the, the virtual, more about the virtual Virginia curriculum and to ensure that we feel like it would be suitable for for our students in, in the school system. And, and then my final request is to, if, for the administration to provide the board with some updates regarding, again, what our, our neighboring school districts are doing, and then also what our peer districts, such as Norfolk and, and other, you know, Petersburg, other, other districts that have a student body that are similar to ours in regards to virtual, in regards to, you know, procedures for, for quarantine, et cetera, just so we can see how we fit in, you know, with, with what our peers are doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Anyone else?
No, ma'am.
All right. Well, thank you all for that robust information. It shows that a lot of work has been done. I do have one question, though. I'm thinking in terms of Mr. Cameras, this question is for you. In terms of the questions that are coming up with all the different positions that we may need to have, when we get out relief money per se or stimulus money, whatever the terminology is, those funds, will we be privy to be able to handle, now handle, hire other persons for wherever our needs are? Can some of that money be utilized for that with the attendance, the one on one support with the Virginia, virtual Virginia? Is that that funding, when we do receive it, we will be able to make that adjustment moving forward in the best interest of every child, because we'll have the funds there to get the proper equipment, to get the proper transportation, whatever else we need to move forward. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Correct that we can utilize that money for whatever we want per se, or there's a, a running list?
I wouldn't say whatever we want, but anything related to responding to, I would say anything related to responding to those map scores.
So there may be opportunities for parents to get jobs in our school system. Oh, well, is something correct?
I don't want to over promise.
Okay, something to think about. I'll put it out like that then.
Okay.
That there's something to think about, something to think about, as well as you stated earlier about hiring some high school students as well.
We're, we're going to look at everything.
So I'm, I'm just looking at the economic piece.
I'm sure.
Going back to the data with Matt. When we talk about differences, it's very evident that it's economic as well.
Yes.
So it's not, it's just the way it is, unfortunately. We can do better. All right. Thank you also very much. We now will move forward to 6.03, the first review of the calendar.
All right. Dr. F, do you want to say a few words?
Sure. Thank you. So we are presenting the draft calendar that reflects the some traditional school year following a Labor Day, post Labor Day start. A few highlights to note here, similar to the previous calendar, we have prioritized a more diverse representation of holidays. So you can see days added in for Diwali, Rosh Hashanah, Eid and some other days, which are spread throughout. You could note those in red. So all of our reds are holidays. That meant we, that meant we made some adjustments to the traditional winter holiday. We also have incorporated, rather than full professional development days throughout the year, we've incorporated half, half days on certain Fridays throughout the year, as well as dedicated teacher workdays, as well as dedicated parent teacher conference days. The teacher workdays you can see in purple. The parent teacher conference days you can see in gray. Overall, this calendar with the added holidays to get us to 180 days, the last day of school is June 24th. That would be a half day for students and a full day for staff. And so that's 180 day calendar for students and 191 days for teachers and 193 days for new teachers. Is there anything else you would add, Mr. Cameras?
I think that was great. Thank you, Dr. F.
Mr. Young?
No, I was about to say no one yet, but Ms. Gibson.
And then I'm going to list my name as well. Thank you. Ms. Gibson, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to ask, my initial thought is that there's a lot of discrepancies between this calendar and then Henrico, which you know, has many, you know, lots of obviously overlap. And we've got lots of people that teach in one place and work in the other. So so I do have concern that there are, you know, that there are a lot of days that we're doing that they're not doing. And, you know, I've, I talk a lot about kind of regional cohesiveness, and this is an area where that comes up. To that end, I wonder if, you know, there was a lot of discussion, obviously, about a year round calendar. And I know there was lots of input on that. And I'd like to know what the, you know, process has been to, to gather input from, from teachers and staff on this revised calendar. You know, I do think that there is, you know, some concern that we've got a shorter winter break, that the, the school year is extending, you know, a week longer. So I'd, I'd be curious what the, what the feedback has been on that.
We'll certainly look at the Henrico comparisons. I, I know that our major holidays and spring breaks align. That's something we talked about as a region one team. And then in terms of teacher input, I mean, I think the main representation here is to honor a more diverse representation of religious holidays or major observances. And by adding those in, that gives up, there have to be trade offs somewhere. So that, that's sort of the primary input that we kept, took, took to heart and trying to put together, put together a calendar that kind of gets everybody where they need to be.
Mr. Young?
Madam Chair, I believe you are up next.
Okay, thank you so much. I continue to look at this calendar and thank you so very much. I'm delighted to see the acknowledgement of different celebrations and being inclusive of all of our families. And we're probably still missing someone, but thank you so very much for including that. I just asked one thing to be added. And that is, and I haven't gone back to look at it well in terms of our school board meetings. So, and to be able to follow our policy in place, such as if it's a holiday, we don't meet on that Monday, we meet on the next day. So would you please just, just don't start, but just put it, make it plain for us. And I haven't had a chance to go back and check. So if you would help us with that, Dr. App and your team, so that we won't have any, you know, spring break the same. So we won't have any repeats in terms of having to make notice. And we'll go through it before it's, is up for approval. But please add that. Thank you.
We can do that.
Mr. Young, is there anything else? Anyone else?
Madam Chair, Dr. Harris Mohammed had a question.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
I actually put it in the chat, was thinking, I was sending it to Mr. Cameras, but it, I'm sorry, but so here's the question. Are we meeting on the first Monday of school that begins the first day of school? Are we having a school board meeting? That begins the first day of school. Are we having a school board meeting on that day?
First day of school is not, I'm sorry, Mr. Cameras, go ahead.
It's okay. The school doesn't start until September 8th, Wednesday.
Right.
Okay, I'm sorry. I got it. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Sure.
So that means our first meeting will be the 20th.
We'll make sure to put the appropriate notation, Mrs. Burke, and identify those Mondays and things like spring breaks so that we get that straight on the front end.
Thank you so much. All right. Any other discussion regarding the calendar? Okay, we can move forward now to 6.04, receive the first review Head Start grant.
That's me again.
Dr. Up, you just really have, whoop. Did you get any rest during the spring break?
Okay, so this is, this is our first read. I will be asking for approval second read next week. We have a five-year Head Start, early Head Start grant. And each year, a renewal application is submitted for approval, and that requires approval from this board. And so this is a summary of our budget and the application. The supporting materials can all be found on Board Docs. In summary, we're not proposing any significant changes. You can see the, you know, early Head Start and Head Start by the numbers here. That's consistent with the original intent of the grant. And I will also, so you'll also have a snapshot of both the early Head Start and Head Start budgets. The primary changes in these budgets, really, we had to incorporate the approved raises for staff so that, we have to use our existing allocation. We may receive a larger allocation, but we generally start with our existing allocation, like all of our federal grants. So you can see the breakdown here. There's more funds for dental health, mental health supplies and supports, more funds for teacher technical assistance slash training. And again, the primary increase here was related to wages based on, to keep our Head Start staff consistent with our other pre-K teachers in terms of the raises approved by this board. So you can review the documents, and if you have additional questions, I can take them now. And we will be asking for your approval to submit this grant to the Federal Head Start Program at our next board meeting.
Any questions, Mr. Young?
Ms. White?
Yes, Ms. White, floor is yours.
Dr. Up, I just have one question. What is the in-kind match requirement?
That's a percentage match requirement that the district has to put up. And we, that we count staff that are not paid directly by Head Start. We count some of our transportation expenses, our building, any Head Start classrooms that are in our buildings. So some of that, it's a requirement, and so we count that based on existing expenses that are directly related to serving students in the Head Start Program. So for example, you could say if there's a pre-K center that has 20% of its classrooms are Head Start classrooms, then 20%, a proportional amount of that principal salary could be charged to the in-kind requirement of the grant.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. White. Anyone else, Mr. Young?
No, ma'am.
All right. Be it, no other questions at this time for the first read. We look forward to following up. Thank you, Dr. Up.
Thank you. If you have any feedback for the next week, please send that to me directly.
Thank you so much. Will do. 6.05, receive the first review of the Carl Perkins Grant.
Similar here, this is our first read for our Perkins Grant. The Perkins Grant is for our CTE programs. We receive just under $1 million annually to support our CTE efforts at the federal level. Our primary, a couple of primary focus areas in terms of our application this year speaks to the new courses, which I previewed during our program of studies presentation. So adding some new programs for students based on student interest, as well as lab and equipment improvement, as you've seen here, so that we can implement these new programs or upgrade some of our existing programs. This is, again, the rough breakdown, and you can see what's required. We're required to dedicate a specific amount towards professional development and specific student activities. The majority of this grant is, I mean, everything in this grant is student-facing, be that, again, instructional classroom, the kind of big classroom supplies, big materials, equipment, students attending various CTE events and competitions. This grant also funds a portion of programs like Policy Pathways and other things that supports students' exploration of career activities. So this is the first read. We'll be asking for approval at our next board meeting to submit this to the Federal Grant Office for approval.
Thank you so much, Mr. Young. Any questions in first read?
No, ma'am.
All right. Thank you very much, Dr. Up. We appreciate your.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, Ms. Page does.
I'm sorry, Ms. Page, the floor is yours.
Didn't type fast enough.
That's quite all right.
Dr. Up, thank you for this presentation. You know, CTE is near and dear to my heart. Being a former business teacher, but I'm glad to see improvements with the welding lab because I know that is of, you know, vocation that is, you know, very much in demand. My question is, so post-COVID, are we looking at a more robust plan for CTE?
Yes, ma'am. Well, one, I think in a couple of different ways. The courses we're adding, we're really excited. In particular, I'm very excited about the partnership with the Raceway and Motorsports Technology. I feel like, I mean, I think that's just so cool. So that's, I think, the other piece is we've invested a fair amount of time and will be, over the course of the spring, making sure that students are aware of the offerings through our CTE program so that we can have greater student enrollment. Right now, we're, you know, I think we just, we need more students to be aware of the offerings and benefits of CTE, and in particular, the programs at the Technical Center. And then I think, third, you'll see, at a later presentation from Mr. Cameras related to facilities, some efforts around a kind of reimagining of a career technical education center that'll speak to our long-term visions related to that.
Okay, thank you, and I am looking forward to that. And I probably have some other questions, but I will ask you offline.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Young. Anyone else?
No, ma'am.
All right. Well, thank you also very much, and we're ready to move to 6.06. Receive a recommendation on prioritization of capital improvement dollars. Mr. Cameras?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I bring to you four recommendations tonight to consider related to our new school construction. But before I get to those, I do want to provide a little bit of historical context to ground the board, but also the public for anyone who was watching. So the board adopted Phase One of a facilities plan in 2017. You'll see the screenshot there on the right is the Phase One portion of that plan. As you'll note, it included a number of rezoning recommendations for the South Side. Those have been addressed through our division-wide rezoning. It calls for constructing a new Green Elementary School, which we can check off as we now have Cardinal Elementary School. Calls for a new Ella Card Thompson Middle School, which we can check off with a new River City Middle School. It calls for a new George Mason Elementary School, which we can check off with Henry L. Marsh III Elementary School. The last two elements are a new George With High School and a new Woodville Elementary School. So those are the next two items in the approved Phase One plan. What I'm bringing to you tonight, my first recommendation, is a modification of Phase One. So the modification is as follows. That next on our list, we continue to move forward with a new George With High School. So no change there. But before going to Woodville Elementary School, that we would prioritize the renovation of the Altria site for a new high-tech career and technical education high school that would ultimately replace our aging and in many ways outdated program that we have at RTC. And so the first recommendation, again, first George With, second, the new Career and Tech High School, and then third, Woodville Elementary School. And the rationale for this comes down to a number of key factors. First, our strategic plan calls for the development of themed high schools. And we have heard time and time again about the need for better support when it comes to career and technical education. And while RTC has done admirable work over the years, I think we can agree that it is not equipped as it currently is for the 21st century. And the Altria site was built as a manufacturing facility, and so it has a lot of the infrastructure that we would need. And so it lends itself to that opportunity. Second, we have talked extensively with Reynolds Community College. Dr. Pando and I have talked quite a bit. They are looking for a site to co-locate a new Career and Tech campus. They have already indicated extreme interest in the Altria site on the South Side to co-locate with us, which would give us the opportunity potentially to create a program that would graduate students not just with a high school degree, but also with an associate's degree and industry certifications. We've also heard extreme interest from the city in co-locating some of their workforce development programs there as well. So real opportunity for collaboration. That facility is in an opportunity zone, which lends itself to some financial incentives. And because this project would be really focused on workforce development, there is a high likelihood of significant potential funding from the Biden infrastructure package, which is currently working its way through the administration and Congress. And then last, I do feel it is potentially time to fish or cut bait on the Altria site. It costs us some amount of money every year in terms of utility costs and security costs. And I would like us to make a commitment to move forward with that site. If the board ultimately decides not to, then I think we should start talking in earnest about disposing of the site, though I think that would be a mistake. I think it's primed for this kind of a high school, which would be well-served for our community. So that's recommendation one. Recommendation two is that as these funds become available, and the city has indicated that they believe they have the funds over the next couple of years to finance George With and the CTE High School at the Altria site, that we continue with the process that we used for the last three schools, which is the joint construction team process. And for the public, the joint construction team is a group composed of RPS officials and city officials. On the RPS side, the school board chair and vice chair, myself, our chief operating officer and our director of facilities. On the city side, the mayor's chief of staff, the chief administrative officer, representatives from Public Works and Procurement, and representatives from their construction management company. And we meet every week to work through all the issues, monitor progress. If any issues arise, we address them. And at the core of this process is the understanding that we, RPS, maintain 100% control over the design of all new schools. So we say what the school should be, how big it should be, what kind of programming it should have, what paint colors to choose. Everything in terms of the design is 100% in the school division's control. What the city does is they take the responsibility for the actual procurement and construction process. And then any issues that come up over the course of the procurement and construction, we address during the JCT meetings. I know there has been some desire indicated to have RPS oversee all of the procurement and construction. I would like to respectfully but strongly disagree with that position. We, as a division, are not equipped at all to manage the construction of new schools as we are currently set up. If we were to take on that work, we would have to staff up rather significantly, not just in our facilities department, but also in our procurement department. Doing so would take several months, and that in turn would delay the start of these projects rather significantly. I do want to note that the city's procurement office is ready to put out an RFP for the design services of a new George With High School next week. If we take on this work ourselves, I do not anticipate such an RFP going out until 2022. And that's just being realistic about what would need to happen for us to staff up to the point of being able to execute on that process. And also, just to be frank, bricks are not our core competency. Books are. And I believe we should continue to keep our focus on teaching and learning. If we are the ones overseeing day-to-day construction, that means a lot of my time and energy and a lot of the team's time and energy is focused on that, when really, I want the team spending 90-plus percent of the time focused on MAP scores and PAL scores and the social and emotional well-being of our children. And so I would strongly urge the board to continue with the collaborative process, which has worked very well for the development and construction of the last three schools. To be direct, I think if we continue with this process, George With will open in the fall of 2024. If we take on this process ourselves, it will not open till the fall of 2026 at the earliest. And that's just the reality of the decision for us. The third recommendation I have here is if ultimately the board agrees to move forward with the high-tech CTE High School at the Altria site, I would ask the board to charge the vacant property committee to take a look at the current RTC site for potential surplus to the city, per state or, I'm sorry, city ordinance. Any revenue that would come from the sale of that property would go directly back to RPS for new school construction. And I think that site would yield significant revenue for RPS. And then last, my fourth recommendation is that we use some portion of federal funds, whether that's the ESER or the ARP, to the extent it is possible to finally fund a full and comprehensive facilities analysis that would assess what are the true repair and maintenance needs of all of our facilities? How should we prioritize addressing each and every one of them? And also determine the true cost of rebuilding our older schools and prioritizing that work as well. The plans and numbers that we have on all of these things are outdated. They are not comprehensive. And absent that, it makes it very hard for the board and the administration to manage and frankly, to advocate for additional dollars for the upkeep, renovation and rebuilding of our facilities. And so that concludes my presentation. I'm glad to answer any questions.
Sorry, I'm muted. Thank you. Thank you so much. Mr. Young, thank you, Mr. Cameras. Mr. Young, what's our lineup?
Ms. Gibson and Ms. Page.
All right. Ms. Gibson, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I would like to make a motion. So I motion that the school board adopt the school building, schools building schools resolution and that the administration provide the board with staffing recommendations for up to four full-time equivalents at our April 19th, 2020 meeting. The resolution states, whereas Richmond Public Schools has primary interest in the design of school facilities to meet the unique needs of city students, and it is standard practice for school systems to oversee the design and construction of new school facilities throughout the Commonwealth and nationally. Whereas Virginia Code 22.1-28 states that the supervision of schools and each school division shall be vested in a school board and residents of the city of Richmond democratically elect school board members to serve as the governing body of the school district. Whereas Richmond Public Schools is solely responsible for the ongoing maintenance and operations of school facilities and its operations are directly impacted by construction issues or delays. Whereas in 2018, the Richmond School Board adopted a facilities plan to modernize school facilities, then estimated at $800 million. And as such, has a definitive interest to oversee a competitive bidding process for the construction of new schools. Whereas Richmond City Council adopted Resolution Number 2018R033, supporting oversight of the design and construction of new schools of the city of Richmond by the school board of the city of Richmond, stating that it is in, quote, "the best interests of the city of Richmond for schools to build schools." Therefore, be it resolved that Richmond Public Schools will solely own and oversee the bidding, design and construction process for future schools built in the city of Richmond.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been motioned by Mrs. Gibson and seconded by Ms. Rizzi to adopt the resolution as read. Is there any discussion, questions? Mr. Young?
Madam Chair, there are a few folks, again, not unlike the preceding motion. I'm unsure if it pertains to the motion, so perhaps you'll have to inquire of them. But in the following order, Ms. Page, Dr. Harris Mohammed, and then Ms. Rizzi.
All right, Ms. Page.
Yes, Madam Chair. So first, I would like to know this resolution, what is it based on? What is the evidence that, um, that wants this resolution? George with High School has been on the master, the facilities master plan since 2002. I'm gonna put that out there. There are many deficiencies in that building. By your safety codes, no structural issues. And so prior to 20, probably 2015, we have always been in arrears when it came to our CIP maintenance budget as far as, you know, to adequately maintain our buildings. This is the same conversation that we had in 2009 when I served on the board the first time about whether or not the school board had the capacity to build schools. And based on the information at that time, it did not want the support. And I can't, excuse me, and I'm not sure what has changed since 2009 to 2021. This is very, very concerning to me. Because we made a commitment. We made a commitment to our students. And is this board willing to go back on that commitment? And promise that we made to our students? And then we talk about equity? So you want to have a missed opportunity for the students at George with to be able to learn in a state-of-the-art facility with the tools and resources that they need to level the playing field? I, I'm really concerned that we're, we're having this conversation. I agree. We need to, we need to continue this process in a very effective and efficient, very intentional, so that George with be ready to open in 2024 for our students. Because we're having this discussion, discussion. There are so many budget implications. The infrastructure of our school system, do we have the capacity? And we having this discussion now. Like I said, George with has been a part of the facilities plan since 2002. And we want to change the process now. When it's something we have promised to our students and we want to talk about equity and disparities? Wow. Again, are we willing to make a decision? And tell our students that you are not worthy to learn in a state-of-the-art facility? To level the playing field? Because we've seen in our math scores, the disparities in our scores. Are we going to continue to put out this false narrative to the public? But we talk about transparency? How we exhibit transparency tonight? That's a question that we need to ask ourselves. Because we received this resolution and we, again, we talk about transparency. And we're the governing body of this school division? But you want us to make a decision tonight? We have not exhibited, demonstrated transparency. You know, we're just continuously providing the public with this false narrative.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Page. Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes, ma'am. I have a couple of questions. But first, let me start with some statements. No, let me start with a question. I'm sorry. Mr. Cameras, I was taking some notes. Has identification been installed in the new schools?
I believe it has in at least one, but I have to double check.
Can you double check and get back with us on, on that if you don't mind? Okay, and so listening to, well, first I read the resolution and I read it in detail. And I, I am of the mindset and has always been of the mindset and this mindset will never change as an educator. Schools need to be in charge of schools. I've, I've said it as a full-time educator. I've, that is a belief that has been mentored and instilled in me for over 30 years and that has not changed. I don't see where this resolution, and I've read it several times. I made myself, being the educator that I am, a, a T-column chart. What is the negative in the resolution? What is to gain? What is the positive in the resolution? Equity requires us to step up as a school division and as a governance team. That, that's what equity requires. I did not read anywhere, anywhere in the resolution. And I read it several times since we received it last week. Does not state that we, that the resolution does not state that we do not value children. What it, what it says to me, as a governance team, we're taking responsibility of our school division. And one way we're taking responsibility is through building of schools. That's what the resolution says. Being accountable for the building of our schools. Mr. Cameras, I, I hear you professionally. I really do. But I remember you saying a couple of months ago that, that school divisions have to be able to multitask. And I'm giving that statement right back to you because we do. So if we, if you were asking us to multitask with something else that you wanted at that time, and I can't really remember what it was, but I wrote this statement down because I knew it was going to resurface. The same is equitable here. As a division, we are, through, through your leadership, have to maintain staffing. If staffing is missing in our facilities, hire them. If staffing is missing and I made this department, hire them. If staffing is missing on our custodial team, hire them. We need to do whatever we need to do in terms of staffing to employ the people that we need to employ and employ to make sure that the buildings that we so desire to build are built in collaboration with the city. The resolution that I read, it must be another resolution. But the resolution I read does not say we're working against the city. It clearly states that we're continuing to work in collaboration, but the school division is going to be responsible for the decisions that we make directly with building schools. So if there is another resolution out there that I missed, and I might have missed it, and then, and if I did, I apologize. But the resolution that I read did not state that, that we can't work with bricks and competency. Our, our divi, our job, excuse me, as a division is, and, and I want, I want the, I want everyone who's watching this to take note, write a note, take a mental note, write it down. Curriculum and instruction and assessment, infrastructure, personnel, budget, which includes finance, all of that includes schools. So I understand the for years, and I don't know why Richmond Public Schools for years have not had the capability or the manpower to put people in place to ensure that within the division of employees, we had a facility team that was dedicated to ensuring that our schools were being built the way that they should be built. I don't have the answer to that, but I'm a 30-year educator and all for 30 years I've worked in a school. And when schools have been removed from the responsibility of building schools, Houston, we have a problem. The resolution that I read did not state that we can't deal with bricks and competency at the same time. And I'm with you. The data that we, the, the data that this administration owns, of course, I, as a school board member, want to focus on improving data, absolutely. I think everyone in the area can say that Dr. Harris Mohammed speaks to data and how to move children forward, absolutely. But I've been in the school division several for over 30 years. We can do both. I've seen it happen. The resolution does not speak to a delay in building the next school. That is what people are reading into the resolution. Because it's not a resolution that may feel good to everybody. And again, Superintendent Cameras, you spoke to a couple of months ago making decisions that sometimes does not feel good. I support the resolution, not because who wrote the resolution. I support the resolution because I'm an educator. Because I can see within a resolution, as an educator for over 30 years, where schools need to be in charge of schools. No one is going to be able to convince me otherwise. If this was not a resolution tonight, Shonda Matia Harris Mohammed would still believe that. So it, I don't see in the resolution, and, and it disheartens me that I, I'm just not seeing what other people see or what other people read. But I don't see what I've heard or read from other people saying, we're, we're going to delay children. And absolutely, every single child deserves a, a top-notch school with a clock that works every day, hot water, cold water, lighting that is valuable to, to their, to their ass so they can work. Absolutely, they do. But schools have to be in charge of making those type of decisions. Because when we're not making those type of decisions, then you have what we've kind of experienced, and I wasn't on the board then, but 30% over cost and all this other stuff, all of that can be minimized as well. But we're not breaking a relationship with the city that has been formed over time. And I do believe it's better formed than a year's past. I can see that and it can, it can continue. But this fear, this spoken fear of making children believe that they are not valued because schools want to control schools is a false narrative. That's not true. I didn't read that in the, in the resolution. And I refuse to believe that any board member who, who rose, who raised their hand to take an oath believes that in their spirit. This is, th, this is not wishful. This is righteous. And I'm always going to stand on the side of what's right. And so I don't see where we're devaluing children. I received an email from a teacher that was very nasty about accusing me of the very thing that was stated. I never said that. Oh my gosh, who said that? I devalue children and I don't want a George with High School to be built. I never said that. But these are the narratives that we are, that some people are trying to write so other people can read, and then we become in an uproar. We need to have a discussion that is harmonizing and that is filtering through different questions as we are right now. I do not believe any of us on this board or on this governance team devalue children. But I do believe that schools need to be in charge of schools. That's what I believe. Nothing is going to change that for me. And so that's what I saw in the resolution. I appreciate the opportunity to, to share my heart, to share my spirit, to share what I believe. And, and I do believe we can multitask. I believe that we need to hire the people. I do believe that we start now putting people, if you see an area of weakness, Mr. Cameras, it is your responsibility to speak to that as superintendent and for us to support the vision that you are trying to bring with questions, with guidance, and filling these positions that need to be filled. Not to say, oh, we can't do that because, you know, we, we're about competency and not building schools. We got to be able to multitask. Because if we can't be able to multitask, we'll never be able to meet the competency rates. We'll be, we'll never be able to move children. So let's So let's not put that out there. Let's not paint the picture that we can't multitask because we can. And I believe that we can. And I'm gonna go back to my statement earlier, then I'mma close. I believe we have an opportunity. I believe we have an opportunity to move this division forward with doing some things that are different and surprise people. And so I, I'm gonna end there, and I'm hoping that we'll, we'll be able to do that. Um, but I heard my school board colleague's heart in the eighth because she's been on this battlefield for a long time. A long time. And so I, I've heard her heart, but I just didn't see that in, in the resolution. Um, but if it's another one, please let me know. But.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Burke. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And next person on our list is Ms. Rizzi.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Wow, how do I follow that? Um, you know, I'm not a queen of pathos. You know, I'm not gonna sit here and give a soliloquy. Um, you know, I am concerned about some of the fear mongering that has been taking place around this resolution, specifically that if anyone supports it, they don't care about kids. They don't want, you know, um, a new George with high school. Um, we communicate to George with that they don't matter. Now, George with is in my district. I also did my teaching practicum there in nineteen ninety-five, and I understand that that school has not been renovated since then. In fact, I called and talked to some teachers there, and I could describe room by room the rooms I taught in in nineteen ninety-five, and they look the same. Okay? Nobody wants that school to be a place that's welcoming to our kids more than I do. Okay? I've been in and out of that school for what? When was nineteen ninety-five? I don't even know how many years ago that was. That was my first time in a classroom in George with. Okay? There's nobody who loves those kids more than I do. I have some former students who matriculated through George with. Um, and it is my neighborhood, and it is, it represents people that I care about. A lot of my friends actually went to George with as children. Well, they're my age, but they went to George with. Um, and so, you know, I don't necessarily appreciate some of the pushback I've been getting or, you know, the accusations that I don't care about George with. I mean, I was hit by a parent, um, coming out of the YMCA, um, three days ago, um, describing a sexual assault that happened behind the school. Okay? There are some things at George with we need to think about that really have to do with what's going on there. Um, certainly a building would be nice, but my priority is the kid. There are the kids, okay? I'm losing my grammar because I'm feeling really emotional right now. Um, and so this, this fear mongering is not fair. It's not. I don't see a connection between this resolution and delaying the building of George with. Um, I'm just kind of pointing out some discrepancies I've found in these presentations that we just had to hear. Um, I heard that hiring people to handle the building of our schools uh, would take several months. And then I also heard that the soonest that could happen is in twenty twenty-two. That's not the same. Several months in twenty twenty-two are not the same. Okay? I heard that design could start next week when I've been telling my constituents when they asked me that the design process has already started because that's what I was told the last time I asked about. Um, I also know that Mayor Stony said a couple of times in that I can verify that our debt capacity won't even open up until twenty twenty-four. But here now, we're being told that the school can be built by twenty twenty-four? There's a discrepancy, and I wanna know what it is. I wanna know why this information doesn't match. Um, and so, you know, and, and, and I wanna know too, like these, you know, with these new schools, right? From what I heard, there are still punchless items that are needing to be resolved. Right? So if these other people are so expert at designing schools, why are they still working on these punchless items? Why isn't the, you know, job complete? And so, I, you know, I'm feeling like there's this false dichotomy that's being put out there, um, false narratives. People, um, and very unfair about how they characterize people who support this resolution. Um, it is time for the school board to have the power that it should have. And, and that is why I'm in support of this, and I also deeply love. If any of you there are, you know, watching and you're affiliated with George with, you need to know that you're in my heart. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rizzi. Um, anyone else, Mr. Yang?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Gibson, then Ms. White, then Ms. Door, Ms. Jones, and then the superintendent.
Ms. Gibson, Ms. White.
Uh, Ms. Door, Ms. Jones, and then superintendent.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson.
And I'm sorry, and then Ms., Ms., and then Ms. Page.
All right, Ms. Gibson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so I, I appreciate the, the, um, uh, perspective shared by my board colleagues. Um, I want to, uh, first note that as a district, we don't have the luxury of saying that, um, we wanna focus on, on reading over bricks. I think that, uh, today, our, our discussion has highlighted one thing, which is certainty, which is that this is not a virtual school system. We teach in buildings, and, um, and we, we are responsible to make sure that we can build them and maintain them. It is a, it is a competency that we do not have a choice whether or not, um, we wanna pursue. Um, and, uh, you know, and I think that, um, we are perhaps dismissing the, uh, the expertise that we have in-house. We have just hired a new COO with a background in housing. We have, uh, folks on the facilities team that I know are, are incredibly experienced and, um, you know, would be, uh, open to, to, uh, additional responsibility. We've, uh, recently hired another person in procurement. So, um, so, so the notion that we cannot do this, to me, is not, it's not okay. Uh, the fact that, as, as Ms. Page noted, that, um, that George with has been on the list of schools to build since two thousand and two, and that we still haven't gone anywhere with it, to me, is clear evidence that it's time we need to be doing something different. Um, the, 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 the fact of the matter is, is that, um, the process that we have adopted, uh, with the city has, has failed us. Um, and it, and it is time that we, we, we turn the leaf. Um, Richmond is, uh, an anomaly in how we've been treating school construction thus far. Um, the Virginia Code grants the school board the authority to oversee, um, our schools, and, and we are elected to oversee the school district, which includes the buildings of the schools. This is what we're elected to do. Um, and so, but, but unfortunately, what, what, what we've done is taken that authority that we've been granted by the people that voted for us and handed it off to the city to do our work. Um, and, you know, I, it, essentially, uh, it would be one thing if there was, uh, an enhanced expertise that we had at the city, if there were some savings that would, you know, move us, but none of that is there. Um, you know, what, what has, has just happened is that, um, you know, we've, we've passed this over, and we're seeing an incredible, um, a number of problems that are, that are significant, you know? Um, by handing it over to the city, it has allowed, uh, politics to be completely entangled in, in the work that we're doing. Um, you know, as a city, we were told that, um, that this football, uh, training camp was going to give us a school. We were told that the Coliseum, if we built it, would lead to all this money to, to, for the schools. And so, um, and so, i- it is, it is important that, that if, you know, that we separate these things because this should not be about politics. And, and any suggestion that, um, that my colleagues are, are, are somehow being political about this, um, that's the pot calling the kettle black, okay? Because let's look at the, let's look at the timeline, right? So, um, as Paige noted, that, that there was a, a deci- you know, that, that George with was identified as a, as an important school to build back in two thousand and two. I've been on the board, and my first vote as a, as a board member, the day that I was, um, uh, sworn in, was on a facilities plan with George with as, as one of the schools that I supported, um, you know, having, uh, having addressed in, in our first phase of work. Um, the board then, uh, decided and voted in the spring of twenty eighteen to move forward with the design development of four schools. That was, uh, the New Green Elementary School, Elkhart Thompson, um, uh, uh, George, uh, George Mason and, um, and with. So we, we, we said to the city, okay, we will give you the authority. Please proceed with the RFP to do design development of these four schools. And we did that. It might, you know, we were told, we don't know that we have all the money for this, but we can at least start design development. That's what we were told. Um, that was the explanation that was provided to the board. Well, then, a couple of months later, I'm reading in the newspaper that the city has decided only to go forward with an RFP for three schools. This was not something that the board ever said this is okay or not okay. It's just what happened. Um, and then, since then, there's been no discussion about George with. There has been no discussion about George with until October twenty-second. There was a news, there was a press release or a press conference with the mayor like twelve days, twelve days before the election that we were gonna build a new George with. So if somebody's talking about this being political, it is political for somebody, but it ain't me. This was, this was done right before the election. So, so we have something that clearly is political, right? And then, to make matters worse, we don't even know what we're doing, right? Because there have been countless problems in this process. So MLK was built with a, a community room because the, the city deemed that it needed it, and now it's a storage space. Same thing at Huguenot. There were roofing issues, significant roofing issues at Huguenot, which led us as a board to have to approve spending an additional million dollars to have the, to have the, the gym floor replaced. We then, everybody, I don't know if you recall back in twenty fifteen when, um, there was talk that we spent as a city, what? Sixty thousand dollars on a time capsule to be built for, for, for Huguenot. That was through AECOM, right? We remember that. We remember the fact that, um, these schools that we had originally estimated to be costing a hundred and ten million dollars, now the budget's coming in at a hundred and fifty million dollars, right? And the, we picked these schools, the school designs, because it was supposed to save us money. We picked the school designs that were among the cheapest schools to build in the state in twenty seventeen when they were built, the cheapest. Well, how is it that then we build those same school designs that were supposed to save us money, and they are among the most expensive schools that were built in the state last year? In fact, the only school system that had a more expensive school construction process was Arlington outside of DC. That's not right. Right? We also, uh, saw the issue with the, uh, historical building. I mean, it is audacious that we had, uh, 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 we're moving forward, that somebody was in charge of a project, right? To move forward with the construction and demolition of a school and never got the approval to, to tear down a historic building? So look, I mean, I, I have a master's degree in architecture. I'm familiar with the process. And what I can tell you is that this type of thing, this isn't a small deal, right? Like, these aren't sort of things like, oh, things happen. No. No, that's, 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 that's audacious, right? We were gonna tear down a building, a historic building, without having the approval to do so, and it was already designed to be such, right? These are huge, these are huge, this is incompetency. This is incompetency, and then we're paying for it, right? So we are, we are outsourcing this service to the city that doesn't even have the core competency internally. They are then, then outsourcing it to another company, and we pay this other company as a city millions of dollars to act as project manager, right? And then we're gonna suggest that if we don't like this process, we're political? Look, I'm, I wrote this resolution because I'm tired of waiting. I'm tired of waiting, and I'm tired of reading about millions of dollars that we are wasting when we have identified the fact that we have needs that are immense, immense. So, um, I am hopeful that, uh, majority of my colleagues are, are ready to do the work that they were elected to do. And, um, and that we enta- you know, unentangle the city politics from what we need to be doing for our students. Um, and I look forward to hearing the recommendation from the administration on how we can make it work. And to the mayor's office, a mayor who ran as the education mayor, what I say is, uh, if, if, if he is the education mayor, then, then let him say, then, okay, board, I understand. How can I help? How can I help? That's what collaboration should look like. We should be in charge, and then, yes, if the city wants to help us, let them help. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson, Ms. White.
I'm gonna be very brief. Thank you, um, Madam Chair. I've sit here and I've listened to my colleagues, and, um, I heard the motion. And, um, I'm, I'm seeing that passion is coming out, but not the passion that needs to come out. Uh, when we start talking about others' commitment, um, I resent that statement with commitment with children. I treat every child just like my own child. I've been following Richmond Public Schools for eleven years now. And I heard it. Bold moves. I heard the bold move with Woodville. You're ready to, uh, do another um, center in place of a school? So we are saying that the Richmond Technical Center, which is, was built in nineteen sixty-eight, but Woodville was built in nineteen fifty-four. So we're still not ready to put our kids on the front. Richmond Technical Center, we've had issues there, and we still have issues there. It's probably need to be looked at, revised, and reformed. But that's not the problem with Woodville. We ready to go buy another building and put Woodville last. So now we're ready to put our children last again. And I heard you, um, Mr. Cameras, I heard you out loud. You said that we can't deal with bricks in education. Well, I hate to tell you, I can deal with both. I am a licensed contractor with the state of Virginia. I can build. I can also tell you, education, I can deal with education too because I do have a master's in education. So I can deal with both. And I heard one of my colleagues say that we don't hold dear to our oath. I have taken three oaths in my lifetime. And I hold my oath very dearly to my country, to my state, and to this board, to the children. So when someone say that there is no commitment, I can tell you that I have all the commitment in the world for these children. And when somebody tells me that this been going on since two thousand and two, and you halfway been on the board half of this time? Two thousand and nine? Come on! Who is really for the children? Let us talk about commitment. Let us talk about who can deal with bricks in education and ready to put our kids in the back burner to build another technical center. I stand for the children. I stand for schools to build schools. Yes, I know the property of the, of the, the property, the city owns the property. But the school board, these are our schools. It's time to get in place what we need in our schools. If you don't have the procurement director or the procurement manager who knows how to do procurement- who knows how to do procurement the right way, then it's time to get new procurement. We've been on this board long enough, long enough. And we don't make the right decisions. We keep running around the bush. We want these bold moves and slick tones? No, it's time for our children. Number one, I'm going and I approve that motion. Now, don't get my commitment mixed up and don't get my oath. But it's time for our children to get what is deserved. Yes, George With needs another school. And who else is not going to say that they don't need another school? My district needs another school. But I am not going to let you put back a school that's all from surplus, take a billion off surplus and say, oh, we're going to forget about the children at Woodville. Why is that? Nobody can tell me, why is that all of a sudden? Nobody was concerned about the surplus a month ago, taking it off the list. So now we ready to take it off the list and put the kids on the back burner. That's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White. Colleagues, I asked as we move forward that we all are passionate about making decision in the best interest of our children. But I ask as we move forward, if we can, so far as the personal situations that we're addressing, just, just be mindful of, of the main thing being the main thing. Whether we agree, we can agree to disagree. I just don't want us to get into personal back and forth as well. But a decision will be made and however it's made, we have to move forward with it collectively. But I want us to be mindful of our purpose in addressing this motion and moving forward. Please, Ms. Dorr.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I agree, lots of heartfelt comments from around the table. I would agree that it's, it doesn't have to be personal. We're allowed to disagree and that's the beauty of democracy. So I also believe in sharing why I am voting for things. So I plan to be voting no for the following reasons. One, I am unclear as to how this impacts the timing of the construction of George With. And I don't personally want to do anything that puts into jeopardy that timing. I'm also worried since this wasn't on the agenda that our George With community hasn't had time to weigh in. Two, I'm worried that this may take more than four people. And at four people alone, we're looking at a, by my estimates, a one and a half million dollar budget impact over the next five years. So I'd want a little bit more transparency as to exactly what the budget overrun would be here. Three, I agree with Dr. Harris Muhammad. I've been thinking a little bit about, you know, when we're talking about year round school. We said, you know, we can do both. We can prepare for reopening and we can do year round school. And now we're saying, well, we can't do both. We can't do new construction, but we can do reopening. I think that, you know, where I sort of draw the line as well, I was supportive of year round school. And I'm not supportive of this. I think the reason for that is that I do think that I personally want the administration to be focused on academic matters. And so when I want them to multitask, I want them to multitask around areas of academics. I also, you know, I just want to make sure that as we move forward, we've spent a majority of this meeting from the two hours of public comment, plus this time talking about school construction. And somehow the casino, yes or vote, yes or no, got into the, the construction. I just really don't want, I was hoping that we, we could spend more time on this meeting on academics and on our reopening plan. And I'm disappointed in sort of the direction of this meeting. And I hope that whatever we choose tonight, that we can just continue to, to make sure that we're, we're putting the focus on our number one priority, which is reopening for the fall. I do think that my colleagues have made a lot of good points though. And I have had concerns about our facilities management and our cost overruns of the first three schools. I think eventually it does make sense for us to transition to in-house expertise. And I wonder if there is, you know, a halfway point here of getting a sort of a better project manager or someone with facilities expertise that can help be a little bit more of a champion on the joint construction committee, potentially a compromise and then a phase in plan. But right now, in the absence of those details, I plan to be voting no tonight. But I appreciate the conversation and for those of you that brought it forward.
Sorry. Thank you, Ms. Dorr. I believe next, Mr. Young is Superintendent Cameras, is that correct?
Ms. Jones?
Ms. Jones and then Mr. Cameras. Thank you. Ms. Jones?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm feeling the same sentiments of Ms. Collins. I have a severe headache, so please bear with me. As I'm listening to everyone, I often find myself as the latecomer, right? Because so many folks have been around. So a lot of these processes, a lot of the resolutions and a lot of the motions that are being made come from things that have been on the table for a long time and a lot of unanswered questions, a lot of action items that haven't been taken care of. And so I just want to kind of go back a little bit because in 2019, when I had a child in RPS, I was a mom who was focused on my child and the school that she attended. So I didn't attend a lot of the school board meetings. Whereas a lot of you have a lot of school board experience. But what about the mothers who aren't on social media, who don't understand all of these resolutions and policies and all these things that are happening? And to just kind of like throw stuff up in the middle of meetings, popping them up on Facebook, popping them up on agendas in the middle of situations and then say, we need to do this now, is so unfair. And I think that I agree in listening, there are so many valid points to this resolution. I did not hear that no one cares about kids. But I do want us to think about just the way we go about handling our business. And then on top of that, we cannot pick and choose when we want to stand firm or put a stake in the ground because we feel like it's time. And if it is time, then that is something that we should be discussing before. Because I personally am not aware of a lot of the stuff. And it's not because I haven't done my research. I've sat here weeks after weeks after weeks, listening, meeting after meeting, listening, learning and trying to understand. And we still pretty much do what we want to do when it comes to moving whatever we want to move. So I feel like if we're going to talk about collaboration, co-creation, equity, if we are going to use these words, then let's really be about them. Because right now, even to say, if we don't have the people, hire them. We all know that it is not that simple. And we have all sat here and talked about the, the feedback that we receive, the way our school district is perceived. So to assume that we can just hire people based on the way we are not even working together is something to not even, you know, we not taking into consideration where we are as a school board, as a district, and the work that we need to continue to keep doing. I am not supporting the resolution, not because anything in it is not valuable. Anything that you wrote, Ms. Gibson, is not something we should be looking at. But just because of the fact that I'm a, I'm a person, for me, I, I need more information. And to just spring something on and then expect me to say, yeah, okay, I agree. And I'm not saying that's what your intentions were. I'm just saying I want us to just be more mindful. And I think the other, the question that I have is, how does the resolution, I, I wrote it down again, because like I said, I have a headache. But how does the resolution speed up the process of building two new schools? If we still don't have the money? So if we don't have the money, how is this resolution going to speed that up? And then I want us to, you know, not, I, I don't want to believe in the situation. That's my one question and the point that I was trying to make about just us being mindful about when we are just adding things to the agenda and just expecting a decision to be made right then and there, that clearly shows that we are not in alignment. Because if half of us are not even aware and we're not talking to each other about what's going on, or even if I'm just having a one-on-one conversation, but we're not discussing it as a board, it's still not conversation. Because it's none of us. And there's a will. And if it's not the will, regardless whether we agree or we don't, if two are having a conversation and two are, that's not the way we should be operating. So I'll just leave it at that and I'll close the question on again. How does this resolution speed up the process of building two new schools if we still don't have the money?
Thank you, Mrs. Jones. Thank you so much. Superintendent Cameras?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I just want to say thank you to everybody for sharing your perspective. I know there are many passionate feelings about this. And I actually think that's a good thing. I think we are stronger when we bring all of our heart and all of our soul to the issues in front of us. First, I want to be very clear, at least from the administration's perspective. I believe everybody on this board and everybody in the administration wants the best thing for kids, wants it as soon as is humanly possible and wants to ensure that it happens with the utmost equity. So I, I don't think any of the perspectives we heard tonight suggest anything otherwise. So that's number one. Number two, I do want to, I do want to push back against this narrative of RPS versus the city. And that there's a, some sort of zero sum game or we win, they lose, or something of that nature. I am proud of the relationship that we have fostered with the mayor's office and with the city council. I consider both the mayor and Dr. Newbill close colleagues, friends. And I think that's a good thing. And I think the work we have done together with Chair Page, Chair Owen, Chair Burke, has yielded tangible results. Let's remember, this is a mayor who, in his first year in office, proposed a tax increase for what? To build new schools. And that's exactly what we did. And anybody who's been to that beautiful Cardinal or beautiful Marsh or beautiful River City, I think is proud of what we achieved together. And I am proud of the working relationship that we have developed that has yielded those schools. And I believe that it can continue and grow. Is it perfect? Of course not. Are there things that need to be amended or adjusted, of course? But that is a collaboration that has benefited thousands of kids in the city of Richmond. And I think we can build on that rather than sort of retreat to what I've come to see as these very common Richmond narratives, which is if one political body is up, another political body has to be down. Third, I just want to address this question of multitasking. I agree, we have to multitask. But I also agree, or I also believe that when we can focus, we should focus. We are coming out of a once in a lifetime crisis with COVID-19. We have seen the toll it has taken, not just academically, but in terms of our children's mental health, the amount of violence going on in our communities. And I come to you with, with humility, there's only so much we can pull off. Yes, I believe we could pull off year round school because that was within the sphere of teaching and learning, the core work that we do. I need everybody on this team, the administrative team, focused on reopening in a spectacular way that truly represents the love that we have for our children. And it's going to take everybody on the leadership team and every principal and everybody in RPS working around the clock to make it all work. It's not that we couldn't take on the construction of new buildings. Of course, we could. But it will necessarily distract us from our core work, which is reopening, addressing the academic and socio-emotional needs of our children, which are deep right now. And we don't have positions that we just haven't hired for. The positions we would need to do this do not currently sit on our books. So we would first have to even figure out what kind of positions do we even need? Then we would have to write job descriptions. Then they have to be sent to the VDOE. Then the VDOE needs to approve them. Then they need to be posted. Then we need to vet candidates. Then we need to hire folks. Then we need to onboard them. Then they perhaps get their head around what the situation is. Then they begin to get work on writing an RFP. And these are huge RFPs, thousands of pages. And Dr. Upkin spoke to us, she read them all the last time around. So I'm not suggesting there's anything nefarious at play when I say this is going to impact the timeline. I, I am telling you, as your employee, the one charged with carrying out the expectations you set for me, I cannot deliver on the timeline that the city can. I just can't. The city is ready to put out an RFP for a new George With for the design next week. The earliest I would be able to would be the end of '21 or early '22. And I'm being realistic about what I have the capacity to pull off. And that may be the decision the board wants to make. And that would be okay. It's not the decision I would make. But I don't want to promise you that I can make it happen on a quicker timeline. I just can't, particularly as we're coming out of COVID focused on reopening. I need my team completely dialed in to the academic and social emotional response to this pandemic. And last, you know, we earlier in the agenda had a quote unquote, first read of the Perkins Grant. It's for $877,000. We had no discussion of it. But we're going to have the second read and the vote at our next meeting. And yet we're about to vote on something which is going to affect hundreds of millions of dollars, potentially tens of thousands of students and countless families who, let's be honest, have no idea what we're talking about tonight. They haven't even heard about this resolution. I think would be, regardless of the merits, whether you agree or disagree, I think it would be deeply disrespectful to our families, our constituents, if we voted on this tonight, when this resolution isn't even on board docs, wasn't its own agenda item and didn't give people the opportunity to weigh its costs and benefits, however it ends up. So at a minimum, I implore the board, do not vote on this tonight. This is way too big an issue to suddenly vote on without gathering deep input from our community. And so my request is, at a minimum, this board delays this vote until a future meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cameras. I think, Mr. Young, did you say we have someone else?
Yes, ma'am. Believe we're, I believe it's in the following order, Ms. Page, Ms. Dorr, and then yours truly.
Okay, Ms. Page?
Madam Chair, if Mr. Young would like to speak before me because I've had an opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Thank you, Ms. Page.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Page. Thank you, Madam Chair. Just briefly, not unlike what the superintendent said a moment ago, I want to affirm our collaborative relationship with, with the city. By no means is it, is it perfect. But, but I, I will support this resolution because I, I want to affirm our collaborative relationship with the city. And specifically, it's been referenced a couple of times. The, the city passed a resolution.
uh, it's been referenced a couple of times, uh, the, the city passed a resolution, uh, that it, uh, that the governing body of the city of Richmond, uh, voted, uh, in, uh, affirmation of, of a resolution, not unlike what we're considering this evening. Uh, but I don't want my vote to, uh, be misinterpreted, uh, for, um, something it isn't. Uh, I am grateful to, uh, I'm grateful to council, I'm grateful to, to this mayor and, and to his team. Uh, uh, I am excited about the opportunity to not just build into George With, not just to, uh, build a new Woodville, not just to build a new technical center, but I anticipate, like I think we all do, an opportunity to build a lot of new schools and to ren- renovate the balance. Uh, we, uh, at the risk of, uh, at the risk of jinxing us, uh, I, I anticipate that, uh, that we will soon be in receipt of significant monies from Congress that we can appropriate for the purpose of bricks and mortar. And so I would, uh, I, I think it's important to note that, uh, there are, uh, most valid points that have been articulated by everyone this, this evening irrespective of, of, uh, their position on this resolution, but, but, uh, I would, I would note that if, if the RPS were to ever build the infrastructure, uh, the human, uh, uh, human capital, uh, to assume some of these responsibilities pertinent to procurement and then design, build, and, and then project management, now would be the time. Because we know, to, to be blunt, we know that this discussion, and to the superintendent's point a moment ago, this isn't just about George With, and it's not just about Woodville, and it's not just about a new technical center. Uh, prayerfully, it's not. Uh, we, we anticipate that it's likely going to be about something, something significantly more. And we're all excited. I'm super excited about what that's going to mean for our students and for our teachers and for our community. Uh, so, uh, so I, I, I will be supporting the resolution, uh, not, uh, for any reason other than one, to affirm, uh, our collaborative relationship with the city, and specifically, uh, what, to what council, what council already adopted as, uh, as a resolution. Uh, two, an opportunity for us to, uh, to do, to do something that folks only a few years ago, when I first joined this board, would have laughed at, i.e., the opportunity to really rethink all of our inventory, all of our capital portfolio. And, uh, and the three, um, to, uh, uh, ensure that, uh, that, um, in collaboration with our, our terrific friends in the mayor's office and council, that we, uh, we stretch every dollar and, um, uh, and we prior, and we prioritize getting our kids in, in new school space as soon as very possible. Uh, thank you, uh, thank you again, Ms. Page and, and Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Young. So the next person to speak then is Ms. Page and then Ms. Door. Thank you. Ms. Page?
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to make a point. So we, you know, we talk about how long George With has been on the facilities plan on the list since 2002, and I think we're missing a point. We talk about our aging facilities and the condition of, conditions of our facilities, and then you wonder why they're in the conditions that they're in. Because we have not had the money. We have not had, we have not received the appropriate amount of funding in the CIP budget prior to 2018, when we received $18 million for CIP maintenance. This is, projects stay on the list for the time that they do because of lack of funding. Years and years of neglect. And if we don't have a new source of revenue, then where do we get the money from? Because we don't have tax and authority, so we do not have the ability to raise funds. So, again, we talk about the length of time buildings are in need of repairs or in need of new construction. We have to look at the debt capacity. So we're not comparing apples to apples. Um, I mean, we, we need to be realistic and be, and we need to be honest with ourselves and and, and I'm just, and I'm not going to belabor the point. Been there, done that. But we are a board, and we are going to disagree. And there's no, 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 ma'am. Um, again, we are going to disagree, but to agree, but again, we have to work together and keep, keep our focus on the main thing. And that's our children, student achievement. And so that, I'm, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Ms. Door?
Hi, excuse me. Uh, I motion to amend this resolution to delay vote until May 3rd to give, uh, board members time for additional research and the community time to weigh in.
Second?
All right. Okay, um, Mrs. Door has asked that the resolution be this, this, um, recommendation to include the resolution be, um, addressed during the May 3rd meeting to give the communities an opportunity to respond and to also have this on the agenda, and Mrs. Page seconded. Are you ready for the question? To amend the motion. Are you ready to vote? Madam Clerk?
Ms. Door?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
No.
Ms. Gibson?
No.
Mr. Young?
No.
Ms. Rizzi?
No.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
No.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Motion fails.
All right, therefore, the resolution has passed. Oh, we need to, um, we didn't vote on that, did we? We need to vote on that. I'm sorry. So we, that was the amendment. The amendment did not pass. Now we need to go back to the resolution. All right, um, so per Mrs. Gibson's, um, resolution, which was seconded by Mrs. White, to, um, as written in the
I understand.
Madam Chair, I think that was Ms. Rizzi, I, I believe.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. I didn't write it down. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Young. Thank you. All right, the motion by Mrs. Gibson to, um, receive the resolution, her resolution, and seconded by Mrs. Rizzi.
Do you like me to read the motion once again?
Okay. Would you please be so kind to, would you read it, Ms. Gibson, please, since Mrs. Collins, I don't want her throat to keep talking?
Uh, the motion that the school board adopt the school's building schools resolution and that the administration provide the staffing recommend, provide the board with staffing recommendations for up to four FTEs at our April 19th, 2020 meeting. Um, the resolution states, uh, whereas Richmond Public Schools has primary interest in the design of school facilities to meet the unique needs of the city students, and it is standard practice for school systems to oversee the design and construction of new school facilities throughout the Commonwealth and nationally. Whereas Virginia Code 22.1-28 states that the supervision of schools in each school division shall be vested in a school board, and residents in the city of Richmond democratically elect school board members to serve as the governing body of the school district. Whereas Richmond Public Schools is solely responsible for the ongoing maintenance and operations of its school facilities, and its operations are directly impacted by construction issues or delays. Whereas in 2018, the Richmond School Board adopted a facilities plan to modernize school facilities, then estimated at 800 million, and as such, has a definitive interest to oversee a competitive bidding process for the construction of new schools. Whereas Richmond City Council adopted Resolution Number 2018 R033, Supporting Oversight of the Design and Construction of Public Schools of the City of Richmond by the School Board of the City of Richmond, stating that it is in the best interests of the citizens of the city of Richmond for schools to build schools. Therefore, be it resolved that Richmond Public Schools will solely own and oversee the bidding design and construction process for future schools built in the city of Richmond.
All right, thank you so very much, Ms. Collins. Are you ready for the vote?
Madam, Madam Chair, just, uh, I may have misheard Ms. Gibson, but she, I, I heard, but it may have been me that I heard that she misspoke and said April 19th, 2020, in lieu of 2021, or perhaps that was me, but just wanted to clarify.
No, I read it wrong and wrote it wrong. It should be 2021. Thank you, Mr. Young.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Collins?
Ms. Door?
No.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Hi.
Ms. Rizzi?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Mrs. Burke?
No.
Mrs. Page?
No.
Ms. Jones?
No.
Motion passes.
All right. Thank you very much. We can move on to the next item on the agenda, number seven, budgetary items. Are there any? I don't think we had anything on board docs with that. All right, if not, we'll move on with board business. Number one, receive Head Start governance training. Um, Dr. F is, is, um, the lead person still here?
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, you're going to make it. Okay, thank you. You're going to do the training.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Um, so we are required to annually provide the board with, uh, governance training. Um, as the governing body, uh, we are the grant, we are the grantee. Um, and so the board, uh, has a role to play in the governance of the grant. Um, just a snapshot is, uh, in terms of, um, you know, Head Start has four major components. There are specific eligibility requirements around age, income, and residency. Our enrollment by the numbers are here, as you can see. Our locations, uh, for Head Start seats are spread between our pre-K centers, an elementary school, private childcare in the city, and two, um, affiliate partners. Uh, we, we are the grant holder for Powhatan and Goochlin, and you can see the funding numbers there as well. Um, Head Start is governed, uh, by the performance standards and the Head Start Act set by the federal government. So the design and delivery of our program is governed by these regulations, and we maintain, uh, compliance with those regulations, um, as part of our work. In terms of the training for the school board, uh, there are three responsibilities this board has related to governance. Um, a duty of care related to the program, uh, a duty of loyalty to advance the mission of the program, and, uh, obedience to comply with the program regs, regulations, and policies. This board has, uh, charged, uh, you know, through Mr. Cameras, uh, my office to execute this grant in partnership with the policy council, which I'll get to in a minute, and parents. Um, unique to Head Start is a requirement, and I think, you know, a beautiful part of the design is that, uh, parents comprise the policy council of Head Start, which, um, so parents both comprise and give input to the policy council. The policy council advises the governing body through the administration. The administration, uh, engages the policy council. Uh, policy council engages parent committees, and it is a circular engagement process. The specific roles and responsibilities, um, the RPS school board is the governing body. Um, the administration is the management overseeing the day-to-day, and the local Head Start Policy Council comprised, um, primarily of parents and a representative of this board. Ms. Burke serves as our representative. Thank you. Together, these, um, each of these functions work to provide leadership and direction. So the grant application you reviewed earlier, um, had input largely from the policy council and the day-to-day management with approval from the school board. Um, you can see here, uh, the membership, uh, breakdown in terms of who is comprised of governance, each part of the governance. And then key activities are outlined herein in terms of for each, uh, the administration, i.e. management team, the policy council, and the governing body. And so as a school board, um, you should be, uh, ensure you're familiar with the aspects, uh, and responsibilities of the governing body as outlined here. This is, of course, a summary. Uh, for those of you who'd like more reading, um, the Head Start, uh, Program Manual can provide that. Again, uh, another, uh, piece here. An additional activities, uh, a big part is around the governance structure. Uh, and I would say that this is an area that, um, needs further development. Um, it, uh, there is not a lot that is historically been codified here, and so we are working, uh, with the policy council and will work with, uh, our team and the board, um, and are, uh, to further flesh out, um, a more, uh, comprehensive set of, um, written governance, uh, uh, activities and structures. In terms of leadership and direction, um, this board's primarily responsibility is around our goals, and specifically our goals and charges related to early um, childhood education. Um, and we take that overall charge and look at, um, uh, how, how to, uh, work with our Head Start program to deliver on those broader objectives the same way we do for other aspects of early childhood funding. And then lastly, monitoring program performance, um, uh, through the policy council. Ms. Burke is a representative for reviews, uh, related reports and updates. And, um, you know, we provide you, we provide you enrollment summaries and other data on an annual basis, and we certainly can provide you, um, anything else that you'd like to see related to, uh, program oversight and performance. You can see that the primary responsibility is here, um, that you've charged through your, uh, administration and management team. Um, and then similar to governing structures, uh, there's a, you know, primary goal around working towards consensus, alignment, and agreement. And so, uh, the work we do, uh, across, um, both administration, the policy council, and the governing body, um, should work to, work towards consensus, um, by having procedures and writing that facilitate those outcomes. And then in terms of reporting overviews, these are the things that, um, we are responsible for as an, uh, as an administration. Um, and you can see the reporting requirements, the frequency, and the action needed by the board. A number of these are review and acknowledge, which, um, come through the chair's office. Um, and again, we can, uh, at the request of the board, we can certainly, um, provide those, uh, you know, more frequently to the larger board. Um, um, and then, uh, so those are, uh, that's, that's the summary of our governance. Um, obviously, that's a lot to take in. Um, given the late hour, I would ask that, um, uh, if you haven't already reviewed this document, um, to please review in particular the aspects related to board of responsibilities and governance. Um, and I'm happy to take questions or take questions at another time related to Head Start responsibilities.
Thank you, Dr. Epp. Mr. Young, do we have any questions at this time? And colleagues, please be mindful that we do have closed session tonight as well.
Ju- just one, Dr. Harris, Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Dr. Harris Mohammed? Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, Dr. F, I'm going to email you. You stated it, so thank you. I'm going to email my couple of questions to you, if that's okay, and we'll make sure the rest of the board gets those questions.
Thank you.
Through Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else, Mr. Young? All right, if not, excuse me?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. If not, we'll move to 8.02. Thank you, Mr. Parker. Mr. Parker's here this evening. Give us an update on the contract with Bus Patrol. Mr. Parker, the floor is yours.
Uh, so good evening, everyone. Um, I wanted to give you all a brief update.
Uh, so good evening, everyone, um, I wanted to give you all a brief update on the Bus Patrol contract. I know there have been some questions around it, um, and I have been working closely with Mrs. Gonzalez, um, our new COO, she's actually, um, she's gonna help me kind of tag along with this, but I'll give you a brief presentation of the, um, old Bus, Bus Patrol contract from two thousand seventeen, or the current Bus Patrol contract, and some, some additional pieces from, from what is, you know, to propose a Bus, Bus Patrol contract, if you give me a quick second to share my screen. If everybody can see that, and everybody see that, okay, I'm, I'm sure, I'm looking at you, Ms. Burke.
Yes, sir, yes.
Okay, so I just wanted to start it out with, with the background, in two thousand seventeen, um, we signed a contract with a then known as, uh, Force Multiplier Solutions to install approximately a hundred stop-arm camera, uh, systems on Richmond Public School buses, that's the, for those that don't know, each one of the buses have a camera system on them, every time that the bus actually stops and the stop sign comes out, those buses start to take pictures of cars that, that are potentially offenders, the violators of that stop-arm program, and, and basically running the stop sign. Um, and so, we, we then, uh, contracted with, with a, with a place known as Force Multiplier Solutions at that time. Um, the initial contract agreed upon, uh, was done by the previous administration prior to, uh, Mr. Camaras' administration, and the duration of the contract was approximately five years, so it's running out as we speak. Um, Force Multiplier then was purchased by a place known as Bus Patrol. Bus Patrol, in its acquisition of Force Multiplier Solutions, it took over everything, um, the intellectual assets, so basically the computer systems, the uh, camera, the stop-arm systems, all of those things that then became Bus Patrol as well as the software. Um, and then, as we know, uh, for those of us that have done a little research behind before this, Force Multiplier ran into a couple legal challenges, um, prior to being acquired, and then it brought about many questions throughout the country. And so I just want to go through our current contract, um, some of the highlights of our current contract, again, a hundred, uh, buses were equipped with stop-arm system, in our current contract, um, the hundred bus, the, the one hundred buses that were actually equipped were the more high-risk areas where the offenses, uh, occurred the most. Um, the equipment cost in the current contract was approximately one million dollars, that's a fixed cost, and then the other operational costs, um, indirectly vary by month, which is not uncommon in these kind of contracts, where it's a, you know, um, a revenue-sharing type of contract, so the, basically, the indirect cost, they, they, they just vary by month, so it all depends. Um, and again, the revenue-sharing agreement in the current contract calls for Richmond, uh, RPS to receive forty percent of the net revenue after all of Bus Patrol's operational expenses had been recouped. Um, in our proposed contract, um, what we're looking at is all two hundred and twenty-four fleet of buses for Richmond Public Schools are equipped with stop-arm solution, uh, with the stop-arm cameras. Uh, RPS will receive forty percent of the gross revenue, so basically, in the revenue sharing this time, it's a sixty-forty split with, uh, Bus Patrol, but it's upfront. Um, and then Bus Patrol assumes responsibility, a hundred percent responsibility of removal of the equipment should either, either party decide to, to terminate at that time, so basically, um, if we decide no Bus Patrol in the middle of the contract, or Bus Patrol decides no more RPS, it's all on Bus Patrol to get, you know, to come in and take the equipment off of the buses and work with us in that capacity. Um, and then RPS, we will be charged a one hundred and fifty dollar per month for each bus that has, uh, the stop-arm camera system installed on it, they call that their technology. And then just high level, here's some key points, um, all expenses owed to Bus Patrol paid from funds received, they'll be paid from the funds received from, um, payments of citation, so basically, uh, RPS won't be paying any money out of pocket for this system. So, every time they get a, you know, they send out citations, the citation is two hundred and fifty dollars per citation, um, Bus Patrol gets paid from that piece of it. And again, RPS has no, no expenses associated with the installation of the stop-arm camera, uh, system. However, RPS will begin receiving forty percent of the gross revenue from the start of the contract, contract when it's agreed upon, so from day one, they'll, um, will receive forty percent gross revenue. And then Bus Patrol, again, will be responsible for the removal of the stop-arm camera system equipment if the relationship is terminated by either Bus Patrol or, um, RPS or Richmond Public Schools. And then here, I just have an example of the formula based on a citation revenue. Um, so for one month, we'll receive, uh, and this is just an example, a hundred thousand dollars. Bus Patrol, Bus Patrol will take sixty percent upfront, and then RPS will take forty percent um, of the gross revenue, and then assumingly, the technology fees would be a hundred and fifty dollars per bus. So it's right around three hundred, uh, right around thirty-four thousand dollars a month. Once that's all done, then RPS will receive six thousand dollars. All right, and now, uh, if there are any questions, so I kind of wanted to stop right there before we got to anything else.
Thank you, Mr. Parker, first of all, for, um, addressing this for us, thank you so very much, we appreciate that, we know you have lots of projects going on, but thank you for making the time for that. And, Mr. Young, to whom do we have listed to speak?
Uh, yes, ma'am, yours truly, and then, uh, and then also Ms. White and Ms. Rizzi.
Okay. All right, Mr. Young?
Uh, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair, uh, Mr. Parker, thank you, uh, thank you for this, really grateful. Uh, what kind of revenue are we currently bringing in, in a year, with the current contract?
Um, hi, Mr. Young, I will, I will take that question, thank you for the question. Um, I will break this down based on, uh, the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year. So on the ninety buses where we have cameras, we had cameras installed, the program generated approximately about fifty, uh, thousand dollars per year, per, per month, sorry. On the two hundred and twenty-four RPS buses, and we're also going to be putting, um, the cameras on for student buses, so twenty-first student buses. We could have, we could now expect approximately a hundred and forty thousand dollars in monthly revenues, which would be split.
Thank, thank, yeah, I mean, uh, yeah, thank, thank you, I appreciate that, uh, that answered my questions, because if the risk is stated obvious, the operator has to generate at least a million dollars for us just to pay a year, just to pay for, just to pay for the equipment, if we're gonna put a hundred and fifty, uh, a hundred and fifty dollars for each arm on two hundred and twenty-four buses, times twelve months, four hundred and three thousand, so, uh, so yeah, it looks, I mean, that's, it looks about, it looks about equivalent to what we're doing now, uh, sorry, I'm editorializing, apologies. Looks like, uh, it's equivalent to what we're doing now, but the advantage is we're scaling it to nearly twice as many buses, so, uh, uh, thank you, ma'am, uh, and, and sir.
Thank you, Mr. Young, Mrs. White, you're next.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, that was a part of my question that my colleague asked, but I'm gonna, um, also ask my part B. Uh, what account does that revenue that, uh, you had just, uh, mentioned to him, where does it goes, what account does it go back in?
It goes into the general fund, and, uh, our plan would be to use that revenue to buy additional buses.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White, Ms. Rizzi? So using Mr. Parker's example, it looks like we will net six thousand dollars a month if they generate revenue of a hundred thousand. Um, that doesn't seem like a huge return on the investment, and how typical is that, you said, like, did you just say a hundred and forty, Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes, that is what we're estimating, and I can break that down for you on.
What's that based on, I mean, do you have evidence that that's what we generate?
That's based on, uh, thank you for the question, um, sorry to interrupt, that is based on uh, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, uh, tickets and revenue collected on the ninety buses where we currently have cameras installed. So if you scale that up to the two hundred and twenty-four RPS buses and the twenty uh, first student buses, we can expect roughly a hundred and forty thousand dollars in monthly revenue. So if you'd allow, I, I can explain how that split would work out. Uh, Bus Patrol's portion would be eighty-four thousand dollars. Uh, Richmond Public Schools' portion would be fifty-six thousand dollars, from which the thirty-eight thousand in technology fees, if you include first student buses, would be deducted, leaving us about eighteen thousand per month in net revenue. That is what we expect once all of our buses are on the road.
Yeah, and that would be, like, dependent on whether or not it's, it's accurate to make that, that, um, you know, the, the leap you're making from the, the smaller amount to the larger amount, right? And with all of these mandatory stop signs that we have out here right now, I just wonder if they will affect um, or reduce the amount of offenders that we have, um, I know there, there are tons of them around here now. Um, I just, I think it's kind of risky to make that kind of guess, um, without, like, having actual data to support it. And I, I just want to point that out, it feels, because they're doing so much now, uh, traffic calming in the city, that, that I do wonder if those numbers will remain stable.
Thank you, I, I do want to highlight that there is no cost to RPS for this program. All of the hundred and fifty dollar per bus fee would come from the citation, the revenue of the citations collected. If, let's say, we didn't collect enough to pay, you know, for the thirty-eight thousand dollars to be deducted, it would roll from month to month, and then if at the end of the five-year contract, for some reason, there was still a technology, uh, fees owed, we, RPS would not be responsible for paying that. Bus Patrol would write that off. So there is not an instance where RPS would have to come out of our budget for any payment for this program.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rizzi, Mr. Young, is anyone else?
No, ma'am.
All right, board members, this is, um, something that you all asked to have it, um, added to the agenda, it is under board business, was there any other discussion regarding the information that you've received? All right, thank you, Mr. Parker, very much for that, we're gonna move on to eight point zero three, discuss school board meals, budget, and reallocation, Mr. Parker is just Johnny on the spot, called him and asked him about this, and he went straightforward, and we really, I really appreciate, we all do, really appreciate that, because, um, last information that we'd received, um, the money had been, we weren't, didn't have any money in that line. But apparently, when the budget was done, he's gonna share with us that we do have some money, Mr. Parker?
Oh, yeah, so there's no technical presentation for this one, it's just a couple of words here, because, uh, I know over a couple of meetings, um, prior to this one, and even some last year, there was a lot of discussion around the meals budget for a school board meeting. Um, and so after I did a little research, um, and even sent out some stuff to, uh, a few, I think Ms. Burke and I, whatever. Um, and so what I came up with, again, looking at the budget, there's approximately, uh, nine thousand seven hundred and ninety-five dollars in that meals budget, in that line item for meals budget for the school board meeting. Um, and that was as of February twenty eighth. And so, I know there was some discussion, again, from Ms. Gibson, uh, Mrs. Door, there was some, you know, there was just some discussion around that I could remember from the school board meeting. So, that's what you have in the meals budget, if you want to reallocate it, where you want to reallocate it to, um, and talk about those things, you know, it, it's there.
All right, um, board colleagues, first of all, Mr. Young, is anyone, um, have anything in the chat?
No, ma'am.
All right, so colleagues, we can, um, put this on our next agenda and put it under board action. Are you in agreement with that, or you prefer taking action tonight regarding the nine thousand seven hundred ninety-five dollars? Which we, if we don't use it by the end of this year, which I think someone had a suggestion about, um, um, adding it on to our funds that we're giving our schools or whatever else to move forward on our wish list, okay, I just see that Dr. Harris Mohammed suggested that we put it on the next list. Is everyone in agreement with that? If you're not in agreement with that, thank you, Ms. Doris said thumbs up, thank you, all right, so Ms. Collins, we will add that to our meeting on the, um, under board action, if we forgive everybody. All right, everyone back? Do we have a forum? Yes. All right, um, Mr. Young, would you bring us back into session, please?
I move that the Richmond School Board direct its clerk to call for a roll call of the, of the board members, that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from meeting requirement, open meeting requirements by Virginia law, were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification resolution applies. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by this committee of the Richmond School Board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Door, thank you, Mr. Young, Madam Clerk? We ready to vote?
Mrs. Door?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Rizzi?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Page?
Yes.
And Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Since we made no, uh, we made no, um, decis- decisions or changes per se, if there's no other business, this, this, this meeting is now adjourned, go in peace.